Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission. The time is now 5:32 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. It has been duly posted as required by state law. And we do have a quorum of the city commission as everyone is here and present. I want to thank and welcome everyone. We got a full house. It's nice to see so many of you here today. Thank you for being so patient with us. At this time, I'll ask everybody to please rise as Commissioner Lopez leads us in our invocation.
Lord, we gather in your presence seeking guidance and strength. We acknowledge you as a source of all compassion, the wellspring of empathy, and the bond of true unity. We live in a world often marked by division and discord where understanding and kindness can seem scarce. We confess our own shortcomings and extended compassion to those who suffer and empathizing with those who are different from us and then building bridges of unity with those who hold opposing views. We ask you, Lord, to open our hearts to the pain of others, help us see the world through their eyes, to feel their burdens, and to recognize their inherent dignity as your children. Inspire us to act of charity and service, reaching out to those in need with open hands and generous spirits. Grant us the grace to cultivate empathy, to truly listen and understand the experiences of those whose lives are different from our own. May we resist the temptation by judge or stereotype and instead seek common ground in our shared humanity. Help us build relationships founded on respect and understanding even amidst disagreement. We pray for the unity of our communities, our nation, and our world. May we strive to overcome the forces that divide us, whether they be rooted in prejudice, fear, or misunderstanding. Guide us to work for justice and peace, to build a society where all are welcome and valued, and where the bonds of love and solidarity unite us as one human family. We ask this through you, our Lord, who lived and taught us the true meaning of compassion, empathy, and unity. Amen.
On the Fudge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Under state law, conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
10 F.
None.
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 10 F?
Yeah.
Okay. All righty, moving on. Commissioner, do you have any...
What?
Do you have a conflict?
No, no. Thought I said no.
Okay.
Item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the city commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Items three A, mayor's announcements. Mayor, do you have anything to announce?
A few things. I want to introduce our new director of communications and media, Ms. Priscilla West. We're really excited that she's joining us and is going to help the commission share and the city share its story. And real excited that Priscilla was able to join us on her very first day, I think, for the Harlingen Marathon. And want to commend city staff, all of the volunteers, all of the first responders, the volunteers, sponsors, and of course, CVB for putting on an amazing event. Year after year, the marathon continues to grow. And so we saw a lot of people having a great time out there. And so for those of you that ran the marathon, kudos to you. I got to see a lot of y'all run, but it was a great event. And so we want to welcome you onboard. In addition to that, we do have the mayor's business of the month. And Calista, if you can share that with us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. So Mayor's Business of the Month is an initiative that's been happening for over a year now. And it is our chance to highlight some of Harlingen's best local businesses. And so before I invite Mr. Bravo to say a few words, we have prepared a video for you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ariel Bravo. I'm the hearing instrument specialist here at Hearing Aid Company of Texas, located at 101 Stewart Place Road, Suite A in Harlingen, Texas. We are a hearing and healthcare provider. We provide hearing tests, consultations, fittings of hearing aids, hearing aid repair, maintenance, ear lavages. If you don't know what an ear lavage is, it's a cleaning of the ear. Ear molds for hunters who might need hearing protection. We offer ear molds for people who might need something like that for their hearing aids. So the Hearing Aid Company of Texas was started 30-plus years ago by Mr. Wayne Hoffman. The idea behind it was to serve the community with knowledge of healthcare, especially to people who didn't realize the outcome of a hearing loss and how it can affect you on your daily life. So the way it works is we would have you come in, or if you want to call us, our number's 956-797-3839. You'll speak with Mirna, and Mirna can set you up. We look into your insurance to see if there's any kind of benefit for hearing aids. Speaking of insurances, I think it's important to note that we do accept most insurances. People are very concerned about the cost of hearing aids, the process of hearing aids. There's even a whole stigma behind wearing hearing aids. And I want people to know that it's a very easy process. And it's just kind of like one of those things where you're having a conversation with somebody just to see what their needs are. And if their needs are hearing aids, we'll discuss those needs.
So as you saw, this month's business of the month is Hearing Aid Company of Texas. And so, Mr. Bravo, if you'd like to come and say a few words and then join us for a photo.
Good evening, everyone. I am honored to accept the Business of the Month award on behalf of our amazing team at the Hearing Aid Company of Texas. Our journey has been fueled by the dedication of our staff, the loyalty of our customers, and the incredible support from the community. Thank you to the city of Harlingen for this recognition and to everyone who has been part of our success. We are excited to continue serving and growing with Harlingen. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate being a member of our community. And I guess I have seen your business as I drive through there quite often. Thank you for the service that you provide to our community. We appreciate you. We'd love to be able to take a photo with you.
That'd be great.
And if the commission will join me?
Next, we have item three B, city manager's announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to announce?
Yes, I'd like to announce that we are planning a community-wide cleanup on March 1st from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It'll be... The container will be at the Lancy Hill Building, not Lancy Hill Park. It's at 502 East Tyler. And we're going to place a flyer on our website of what we'll accept and what items we will not accept. So if you have anything you need to get rid of, you can bring it by then, March 1st, Lancy Hill Building parking lot. That's all I have.
Item three C, city commission member announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
Two things real quick. First, today is the 80th anniversary of the beginning of the Battle for Ewok Jema, which was really one of the last two major land battles in World War II. The big thing to remember on that is there are probably less than 50,000 Ewok vets left alive in the United States. I mean, they're aging out. They're all in their 90s and beyond. So if you know one, please give them your love because they were the greatest generation. Second thing, I just want to send out my condolences to the family of Jody Hill, wife of Colonel Glenn Hill, former superintendent of the Marine Military Academy. Jody passed away on Monday. She was truly the first lady of the Marine Military Academy for many years, and we sorely miss. So if you see Glenn Hill, give him a hug.
None.
Yes, I do have an announcement here. Ms. Leonard, if I had any notion that you would have been blindsided last two weeks ago with the allegations against you, I would have had a different approach in getting you appointed to the Utilities Board of Adjustments. It would have been a whole different story. My sincerest apologies. There are two sides to every story, okay? One is what you heard. Two is what you sent everybody, well, most of us, on, what is it, April 17th of last year. This, I would like Commissioner Kinsley, Commissioner Missmar, and Commissioner Perez to get a copy of. You, my friend, who got this, just to be on the safe side? Gabe Gonzalez, Mark Saucy, Commissioner Lopez, Josh Ramirez, Oscar Garcia, Javier Segura, and myself. This was on April 17th of 2024. These emails that you sent originated with Mr. Cook. So it's been a while. I would also like to add that a couple of months after you resigned, which is 10 months to the day, you ended up being on the Charter Review Committee. In that committee, you were the only member that attended every meeting. That kind of dedication, that kind of commitment is what brings me, and it brings me to ask for you to be part of the Harlingen Water Works, the Utilities Board. That's why I wanted you there, not for any other reason. That kind of commitment, that kind of dedication is hard to find. And that is appreciated from me to you. Obviously, others don't see that, but I do, and others do. Secondly, if people actually believe that it was a fluke that this person showed up to say what she did two weeks ago, it wasn't a fluke. There's no way it could have been a fluke. You had the opportunity. You were there on the Charter Committee Review. Nobody spoke against you. This committee, this commission elected you. And you said, "Well, I thank you." And I'll leave it at that for right now, but it wasn't a fluke. Thank you.
Okay, for me, I did have an announcement. Just wanted to say next Thursday, next week, on Thursday, February 27th, here at City Hall, I will be having a neighborhood park meeting regarding the proposed park on South Palm Court. So for any of those individuals that live around that area and want to give feedback regarding that proposed park off South Palm Court, next week will be the time that you'd want to do that here at City Hall at 5:30 PM. Another announcement, I wanted to wish good luck for some students from Harlingen South. They're heading out to compete for their state qualifiers. So they're heading out to compete for, you know, on the state level. And I wish them luck on their journey over there, and I hope that they bring back some, you know, state titles. Thank you.
Item four, proclamation, presentation of awards. Item four A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Tonight, we have brought with us Clementine. Clementine is about a year old. She is already spayed. She's current with all of her vaccines. She's super sweet. She's very active, so she would do great in a family who's very active. She has been at the shelter for 111 days. So she is patiently waiting for her forever home. And so hopefully, whoever's watching and may be interested in Ms. Clementine is welcome to go by the Harlingen Animal Shelter at 1106 Markowski, or they're welcome to call and inquire about Clementine or any of the other animals at the shelter at 956-216-5250. But this is Ms. Clementine.
Do you want to let everyone know about your streak?
Unfortunately, Amber is still patiently waiting for her forever home.
She's in a foster home.
Oh. No.
Foster to adopt.
I was going to say, I had heard that she had...
She's in a foster to adopt, and so far, so good.
So that doesn't count, the foster to adopt, to keep the streak going?
I...
It will count. I'm putting it out there in the universe.
I mean, she's in a home, so yes. So, but, okay, great. And then, real quick, if we can, just remind everybody, we do have a vaccine clinic coming up on Saturday. We have pre-registration Thursday and Friday from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. We have 100 vaccines that will be available, but it will be pre-registration only. We are looking to do these monthly, but this is going to be our first one in a while. So we need to make sure that we have kind of things lined out. So that's why we've limited it this month to only 100.
And if I recall correctly, they have to sign up in person?
They have to sign up in person, yes.
And provide residency or proof of residency? You want to share a little?
So it's proof of residency, utility bill, something along those lines. We definitely want to give access to the citizens of Harlingen. And so that's why we are requesting the utility bill, proof of residency at these pre-registration.
Fantastic. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Item four B, proclamation honoring Black History Month.
Hello. So our first proclamation is honoring Black History Month. And before I invite Dr. S. Esther, and hopefully I say your last name right, Adkendell Ami, up to say a few words, I will read the proclamation. Whereas during National Black History Month, we celebrate the vast contributions of our nation's history and identity. Whereas each year, February is designated as Black History Month to remember and reflect on the contributions faced by the Black community while learning from the vibrant culture and history and celebrating its many invaluable contributions. Whereas shining a light on Black History Month today is important to understanding ourselves and growing stronger as a nation as it has ever been, that is why it is essential that we take time to celebrate in immeasurable contributions of Black Americans, honor the legacies and achievements of generations past, reckon with the centuries of injustice, and confront those injustices that we still fester today. And whereas the 2025 national theme for observance is African-Americans and labor, highlighting the significant contributions of African-Americans to the workforce throughout history. And whereas the city of Harlingen is deeply committed to the equality and inclusion and as such honors the contributions made by the Black history community and wishes not only to acknowledge, commemorate, and celebrate the contributions made by local residents, now therefore I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 as Black History Month and encourage all residents to honor and join in the celebration of Black history, contributions, and culture. Doctor, if you would like to...
I can't be Esther, I'm sorry. We had to divide and conquer, so she's somewhere else in the middle of something. I apologize. My name is Alfonso Gatling. I'm the pastor of Mount Olive Worship Center and the co-founder of Village in the Valley. And on behalf of our organization and our collaborative partners, we say thank you to the city of Harlingen for your acknowledgement of your citizenry and the contributions that they've made in this area. We thank you so much for recognizing our contribution.
Thank you so much. We'd love to take a photograph with you and the commission.
Next up, we have item four C, proclamation honoring the Rotary Clubs of Harlingen.
So our next proclamation is honoring the Rotary Club. And before I invite Victor Rivetta, president-elect, to come up and say a few words, I will read the proclamation as well. Whereas the Rotary Club of Harlingen, North Harlingen Rotary Club, Sunburst Rotary Club, and the San Bonito Rotary Club have together provided 120 years of service demonstrating the magic of Rotary and serving their local communities and the world. And whereas Rotary International is a worldwide service organization founded on February 23rd, 1905, with the membership of 1.4 million professionals and business leaders in 200 countries, organized into 46,000 clubs grouped into 227 districts, 34 zones. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. Whereas Rotary International's vision statement is, "Together we see a world where people unite and take action to create lasting change across the globe, in our communities, and in ourselves." And whereas the Rotary Foundation is a public charity that transforms donations into life-changing sustainable projects with a dress promoting peace, fighting disease, providing clean water, sanitation, and hygiene, saving mothers and children, supporting education, growing local economies, and protecting the environment. And whereas Rotary District 5930, South Texas, is 50 clubs are investing in local community-based service projects this year funded through the Rotary Foundation. And whereas the Rotary District of 5930, South Texas, and all its clubs are committed to promoting peace in our community, our schools, and within our families, now therefore I, Norma Sepulveda, the mayor of Harlingen, Texas, call upon all citizens to recognize and celebrate the 120th anniversary of the founding Rotary International on February 23rd, 2025, and congratulate our Rotarians for their commitment to serve our community. I'm sure Rivetta, if you'd like to.
It is truly such an honor to be standing here before you. I am stepping in for Mayor Chris Boswell, former mayor. As our president, I'm president-elect for the Rotary Club of Harlingen. But it's just such an honor to be standing, really, all our fellow Rotarians here. I'm sure we have plenty of applications. We're looking for new members. I'm looking at all of you here. But really, it's an honor and privilege to be part of this 120 years of celebration of service above self. We have meetings throughout the week, and just please come by and visit us. We are continuing to engage the community, to continue to involve the community. We did have a service project scheduled this Saturday at Dr. Rodriguez Elementary, but because of the inclement weather, we were going to postpone it so in honor of Service Above Self Day, which is officially on Sunday. But make it out there, Dr. Rodriguez Elementary, we're looking for builders. We're looking for tools so that we can put together a playscape, a much-needed playscape for the children there at that school. And so, again, it's an honor. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with all of you.
Don't leave. We'd love to take a photo with you and any other Rotarians that are here. I see some Sunburst ones over here, too. I see you, Tim. So any others? I don't know. I can't see from here.
One right there.
Daniel.
Daniel.
And the commission.
Okay. Ms. Melinda?
Moving on to item five, citizen communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. Mayor, we had quite a few sign up today, so we'll begin with Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive. Well, I mean, like always, I always reiterate, there's a lot of good things going on, but apparently there's some bad things going on as well. So we need to stay true to the goal at hand is make a better city for all the citizens of Harlingen, not mix in our own personal agenda or if we don't like somebody because of this or because of that. It causes a lot of animosity. One thing I will say, people, our citizens of Harlingen, because I'm not afraid to speak up, I like to meet problems head-on, have been reaching out to me about certain things going on that I've sent out emails before. I haven't sent one out yet because I'm gathering all the facts, as they say. But I don't think I need to do that. I shouldn't have to do that. Our citizens should feel comfortable enough to reach out to our leaders so it can be addressed. I've come, you know, forth and sent emails without blasting it out on social media with hard facts. I know some things, you got to push it along to make it get addressed, and it has gotten addressed. And I like to be nice about things. I like to go along to get along. But again, I'm a businessman. Sometimes I feel some of the politicians or the people in charge want to run the city as a business. Well, that's fine, too. But are we prepared for that? You know, there's repercussions for our actions. We always need to stay in check. need to stay in check. Remember why the voters voted for you guys to do what you do and stuff. You know, we all have aspirations. My aspiration is to see Harlingen grow and remain positive. There's no reason to come in with other agenda items and stuff, or a sneak attack apparently happened. Fortunately, I usually say what I say, and then I have to go. But on this particular instance, I moved everything back. People wait for me, I don't wait for them. So I'm going to be here a little bit longer, you know, just to see how things go on, because I don't always get to watch everything on YouTube. But we just need to stay focused and make good things happen for all the citizens of Harlingen, everybody. Doesn't matter where you live or what you drive. We gotta just remain focused on the task, and that's to make Harlingen a better place for everyone. Thank you. And I beat the buzzer.
Yes, you did. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next, we have Mr. Tim Elliott.
My name is Tim Elliott from 1025 East Leggett.
Tim, Tim, give me a second.
Well, let him, let him finish. We're in public comment right now, and then we can address whatever questions you have. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank Oscar Garcia for all of his work at the, at the golf course. He's done a tremendous job. He has taken a problem that we've had over the years, and he's made it an object to work together as a team, which the city has never done. They have each department is their own little fief. So he's done this, and he's done it well at the golf course. I really want to thank him. His efforts out there. In the next year, it's probably going to really look nice. But you, the people of Harlingen and city management, the policies that you set at the golf course should not be the same as you set at the city. We are a different entity. We need different direction. But it seems to me that the city does not see that. A good example is we changed the room rental rate, which actually discriminates against the lower income. You know, I don't think it's right. I don't agree with it. But it did not apply by, by city policies. Your purchasing needs reviewing. You know, when we're, we're serving the customers and we run out of hot dog buns, we can't go to the store and buy hot dog buns. This might sound trivial, but it's anything else we have. We need another easy way to be able to get product and merchandise in the store without having to go through an act of Congress to get it. Needs to be a flexible policy. Skeleton staffing was what we have right now, which I think y'all are going to address today. When you have skeleton staffing, number one, it leads unhappy employees. They can't make a plan because we're always asking them to come in. Your customer service inconsistencies. You got your snack bar open one day, it's closed the next day because we don't have anybody to work. You got a loss of sales. You also have lack of your assets protections that you have just spent a bunch of money on. We can't protect that asset without people. Loss of profits. People get ticked off. They have to stand in line, wait one, so they're going to go somewhere else and play. And also, it's overtime pay. If we don't have anybody to work, we have to take the same guy every time, and that guy's going to run out of hours, and we're going to pay him overtime, which is crazy. The staff that you've been requesting today is not what the board nor the city, nor the director of golf escort. It's been cut, been cut by city management. Ask your golf pro what he needs. Okay, why do you, you know, one of the things, we've asked, and we've done this for months, ask him for stuff as a board. We never get any answers. It just gets pushed under. It just doesn't happen. We've been asking for what you're going to vote on day for months. We're three-fourths through the season that we had. We're going to be out of time. Now we're going to be in the summer months. It's just, it's just crazy. We don't, we don't need to be micromanaged by the city. You guys got bigger things to fry, rather than come down and tell us who we can put on the register, or how we have to this or the other.
That's inspired, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you. You got the point.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Next, we have Mr. Gilbert Lucio.
Hello, Gilbert Lucio, 5001 Sumatra Circle in Palm Valley. The cold following here from Colorado. Not used to it. I'm speaking on behalf of Don Ray Leonard. It's been my honor and privilege to speak today in support of Don Ray for the position of the Harlingen Waterworks Board. I've had the pleasure of knowing Ms. Leonard for the last two years and worked, actually volunteered with her on the Harlingen Veterans Board, and I can attest to her dedication, integrity, and exceptional leadership skills. Ms. Leonard is a distinguished Navy veteran. Her military service has instilled her in a deep sense of duty, discipline, and commitment to her excellence. Her experience in the Navy has shaped her as a resourceful individual with qualities that have been evident as her role as chair of the Harlingen Veterans Board. Under her leadership, the Harlingen Veterans Board has flourished with efficiency and innovation. She demonstrated an impressive ability to identify areas for improvement and implement effective solutions. One of her notable achievements was her initiative to update the Veterans Board by laws to better reflect Harlingen's forward-thinking vision and efficiently provide the services needed by veterans in a growing city. Her commitment to serve the veterans community goes beyond the administrative tasks. She's running guest speakers to relay crucial information to local veterans, to include representatives, representatives from the Texas Veterans Commission, the Cameron County Veterans Office, Cameron County Veterans Coalition, and the Harlingen Veterans Peer Center, to name a few. Additionally, she spearheaded initiative to create a recognition program for the Harlingen City employees who are veterans. This initiative would have fostered a sense of pride and camaraderie, camaraderie among veterans and veteran employees highlighting their contributions and dedication to both the city and their country. Furthermore, she took the initiative to organize a market days booth for the Harlingen Veterans Board to make the board more visible and accessible for the veterans seeking information and services. And her outreach and commitment, community engagement has significantly increased the board's visibility. She has served with dedication on the Veterans Board, and she would be a great exceptional candidate for the Harlingen Waterworks Board. I hope you give her the consideration again. And she did some good things for the veterans. Speaking as a veteran myself, I think she will do great. I never had an issue serving for the year that I was with her on the Veterans Board as well. So thank you for your time. And one last thing, not related to this, whoever came up with making the police cars white, they should get a promotion or some sort of, I love it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lucio. Next, we have Ms. Don Ray Leonard.
They say sunlight is the best disinfectant, so let's let it shine, shall we? Mayor, you attempted to publicly humiliate me by using Terracita Garcia during public comment as a precursor to denying my appointment to the Harlingen Waterworks Board, then singled me out in the vote. You may have succeeded in derailing my appointment for now, but you failed as a mayor and disrespected your office. You have exposed your contempt for me and women like me in our community. You're insecure, so easily intimidated by strong women that dare to challenge you. Pulling my appointment was 100% personal. You know it, I know it, and everyone knows it. Finally, some transparency. As for Terracita Garcia, she did not advise the Veterans Advisory Board that she would be addressing my alleged actions on their behalf. She's a malcontent with an axe to grind, and her rant lacked any semblance of the truth. Terracita accused me of violating Toma. Prove it. I regret that she was played and trotted out here to defame me. She publicly attacked a fellow veteran to sway the commission, to pull my appointment, and in the process, she ultimately disgraced herself. Now, to Oscar Garcia and Josh Ramirez, our board advisors, I reached out to them for counsel numerous times and always kept them informed. Their advice was inaccurate and misguided, and constantly sowed confusion. Step up and act like grown men, and stop hiding behind Gabe and Norma. Your refusal to admit your actions and hold yourself accountable says it all. Do you have any integrity? Because of this administration's incompetent management skills, it was painfully obvious to me that we were not getting the support, correct information, and direction we needed from the staff. Reluctantly, I quietly resigned so that our board could move on. Norma, you publicly targeted a disabled veteran who volunteers countless hours every month for the good of our community. I work campaigns and elections. I'm a certified voter, voter deputy registrar. I'm active in local government and various political and veterans organizations. I advocate for the veterans and the critters. I've chaired the Veterans Advisory Board and served on the charter committee. I pay my taxes. I regularly attend commission meetings. I speak for the people. I'm a model citizen. You don't like me? You don't have to, but you have to respect me. Numerous people can attest to what transpired in meetings and conversations, and I have the damning receipts right here, by the way, which I previously provided to you. Commissioners, you deprived me of the opportunity with no evidence, just ill will. I am more than qualified to serve on the Waterworks Board. You may want to reconsider my appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard.
Now, we have Mr. Juan Sevilla.
Now, I wish I would have gone first. Sorry, guys. Good evening, Mayor, city commissioners. My name is Juan Sevilla. A little bit by myself is, my young adult life, I've been fortunate to build a career for myself, touring and working in arenas and theaters all over the country, in the venue management and live entertainment industries. I've been a part of 200 shows in the last two years in the U.S. and Canada, Coachella, Madison Square Garden, Crypto.com Arena. I've also been a part of numerous shows here in the valley. The reason I'm here before you today is because I would really like to get a comprehensive understanding of what the long-term goal is for the municipal auditorium. In my opinion, I believe that that space is being underutilized for the amount of potential that it possesses. I'm confident that with the proper management and direction of the space, you have the opportunity to impact the community and the culture in a very real and positive way. I mean, to me, it's obvious that the lower valley is hungry for entertainment, you know, and there's no legitimate venue beside of valley booking, national touring acts on a consistent basis. There's, so there's a definite hole in the marketplace, and the city of Harlingen already has the facility, the foundation, and the infrastructure to do it the right way and be successful. Commissioner Lopez, the auditorium is in your district, correct? On the city website, you have your 2025 priorities work plan posted. Nowhere in your work plan do you mention or list the municipal auditorium. But in your closing statement of your work plan, you invite the community to join you on your exciting journey, and you say, and I quote, "Let's work together to build a Harlingen that we are all proud to call home, a city that is a destination for residents, visitors alike. Let's continue to build a better Harlingen para todos." So that's what I'm doing. I'm taking you up on your invitation. You know, let's work together to build a better Harlingen, a destination through the vessel of the municipal auditorium. I believe you guys have a perfect opportunity sitting right under your nose. You know, the best part about my job is I get to create memories and experiences for people that last them a lifetime. Everyone remembers their first concert. Mayor, do you remember yours? Yeah? Mesmer, you look like you've seen the dead a couple of times. Look, the final thought I'll leave you guys with, the final thought I'll leave you guys is, you know.
You win, you win.
Thank you. Why can't, why can't we give, you know, these experiences and those same memories to our people and our community and the surrounding areas right here in Harlingen? Thank you.
So, Mr., thank you, Mr. Sevilla. We appreciate you coming out. Just, I know you're, you're new to our commission meetings. And if you're not, then my apologies.
I watch them on YouTube. I'm one of the 20 people.
I love it, I love it, I love it. I think we're going to book you as a comedian at the, at the, at the auditorium. No, what I was going to say is we have your contact information. Oscar is in charge of public buildings, and I'm sure that myself or Commissioner Lopez will reach out, so that way we can take, we can further discuss this at another time. In these meetings, what I was going to preface it with is that we're not allowed to, to, to comment on
I understand.
Public comment. And that's the only reason you're, you're, you're getting the laughs, but no engagement.
I understand.
So that, just for the rules, but we'd love to continue this conversation at a later time.
Again, thank you for your time.
Next, we have Mr. Martin Rook.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Martin Rook. I am a business owner on Jackson Street, and I'm here as a representative of the Harlingen Downtown Consortium. I would really like to talk about the, very briefly, I know it's come up many times before, the downtown at Sundown. It's very important to us as business owners. Our consortium at present is comprised primarily of businesses on Jackson Street. And so it has a very definite direct impact on us. An informal survey among consortium members revealed that, that this one event amounts to anywhere from a fourth to a third of our total monthly income. So we do take it, you know, very seriously. We would very much like to see it continue. To that end, we would like to propose a focus group. We would like to meet with the city and discuss any pertinent, any relevant issues, manpower. I can tell you this, we're getting a lot of feedback. I have a, and my wife and I have an antique store, and we get a lot of people come in from the upper valley. We're getting a lot of feedback about how they miss it, and what happened to it, and we're not sure what to tell them at this point. So we, we, we would like to propose a focus group, is, you know, at your convenience. It can be informal, just so we can kick around some ideas and hopefully get this thing going again for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rook.
Next, we have Ms. Selena Garrison.
Hello. My name is Selena Garrison. I live at 8203 West Business 83 in Harlingen. I'm here to talk about the Tony Butler Golf Course. And first of all, I'd like to start by saying thank you so much for the renovations. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I had made a promise a couple of years ago to you guys, to the commissioners and to the mayor, that if y'all did the reservations, we would bring a national amateur tournament. And we do have one coming now on April 3rd through the 6th. We're going to have a national amateur tournament. We're going to have over 300 players, and they're from all over the state of Texas, including El Paso, Fort Worth, Dallas, Corpus, Edinburgh, Brownsville, New Braunfels, San Antonio. So they're all going to come down, this just to name a few, but they're all over Texas and a few outside of Texas. But they are coming down. They've already booked their reservations at the local hotels. So the Best Western is booked, the Fairfield is almost booked. We have other hotels that have bookings. And so the city will, the city of Harlingen will be able to gain about a little bit over a quarter million dollars in transportation, lodging, shopping, restaurants. And so we're very, very grateful for what y'all did, and for allowing us to bring money into the city. Because as you know, we only have about a little bit over 75,000 residents. So as y'all clearly understand, we rely on tourism, very big on tourism. So thank you. But I do want to talk about the Tony Butler Golf Course and the staffing. We do need more staffing. I don't know if y'all remember, but a little bit over 30, 40 years ago, we were, Tony Butler Golf Course was part of the PGA Tour back when Lee Trevino was around, and a lot of legendary golfers, well-known. And we were part of the tour, and we always had a lot of people that came down for the PGA Tour. We are just a local chapter of an amateur group of close to about 6,000 members statewide. But we, even the amateurs, our golf tournaments do bring in a lot of people. So I hope that y'all would consider more staffing at the Tony Butler Golf Course, because we desperately need it. Back about 30, 40 years ago, we had about 18, I believe about 18 full-time. We now only have probably about just seven or eight full-time. So please consider more, because with such a great Because with such a great golf course, we just need more people to help out. As you know, any other company, if you go in like to a retail store and there's only one register or one employee helping out, and there's 100 people or 50 people that need help, it just doesn't work. And when you have such a high-quality golf course like ours, we need the people to help with the service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison. Next, we have Julio Carranza.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. My name's Julio Carranza. Not a resident, but I bring residence. I'm going to talk about two things. Ironically, one of them, Harlingen Waterworks. You guys have been so welcoming. Each commissioner in their respective district has been very courteous and welcoming, and they answer their phone, and if they don't answer, they call back. Thank you very much. One of the things that was discussed in one of the roundtables that we had with the mayor, thank you very much for the invite, and were the fees. The fees that are being charged by Harlingen Waterworks for inspecting their work, obviously in addition to their already salary rights. So they're getting paid by, you know, all these other fees, but then they charge an inspection fee. Okay, whatever. And this is for subdivisions, new developments. And then after that, they charge you 15... After you're done, in order to record, they charge you 15% of the total cost that you've already spent with water and sewer. So in my case, it was about 200 and some. It's a small subdivision, right? There in Commissioner Morales's district, 44 lots, four acres, townhomes. It was $15,000, right? I mean, I'm sorry, 15% was $47,000. I have all this. I made one copy. I'm going to give it to Mr. Gabe, and so you can give everybody else a copy. And it just, the 15% is for warranty for a year in escrow, not making any money, in case their inspections didn't go through, I'm thinking. And then that money's going to be used for them to fix it. Just something to consider, how we can make it more affordable and not have the burden on the consumer or the developer to have that. In addition, in lieu of that, they say, okay, you can get a bond, right? And that is also time-consuming, and it costs money. Just something to consider, and I put all the paperwork on here, okay? Another thing is the 2024 Building Code, the IBC, International Building Code, was adopted, not implemented in the city of Harlingen. Well, what comes with that, right? It was done in order to have savings for your insurance, for the insurance savings for your community. Well, who's going to benefit on these savings? How much are they going to save? And why would the 2024 Building Code impact any type of savings, right? Questions that were not answered at that time. And the impact on the community is going to be both financial and time-consuming. The book is not even available to study. It's all online. It's not available until August. There's significant changes, and I put, from the National Home Builders Association, on what that is, not only the changes, but also the impact on costs. Funny stuff. On the electrical side, you will, on multifamily, you will be mandated to have an electric vehicle charging station on multifamily. 5%, right? So imagine if it's a big multifamily, you're going to have to have a charging station.
It's expired, Mr. Carranza.
Okay. If I may? Yes, okay. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So for sprinkler systems, water resistive barriers, they're just becoming very expensive. Right now, we have a national house price crisis. So how do you get people to Harlingen? It's going to be expensive. At the end of the day, as the builder, we pay more. Who ends up eating it? Your neighbors. The ones that are outgrowing their first home. Are they going to go somewhere else where it's cheaper? Where, I don't know, it's in the thousands. Something to consider, right? And is your staff trained to implement the codes? I can tell you, no. I can answer that for you. They're not right now. They're going to have to be trained. And is the material that is needed for these implementation of codes available? Right? We don't want to have like that, uh... The material shortage that we did with the Transformers a while back. Something to consider, guys. I'm not saying don't implement it. You obviously already adopted it. Take it in phases so that you're not going to have a bottleneck at the city, okay? Just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carranza.
Gabe?
We'll continue with Mr. Robert Lefwitch.
Robert Lefwitch, 909 East Park. Would I like to just dedicate or take about 10, 15 seconds to have a moment of silence for those animals that were needlessly euthanized in the city of Harlingen last year? Thank you for that. The first thing I want to do is I want to address something that's ongoing, talk about cost of doing business in the city. Every time we have a tax increase, you see me, I'm here. Well, the results of it are kind of showing themselves right now. First off, Mayor, when you go to social media and you tell everybody, "Well, we didn't raise taxes. We lowered the rate for the last 25 years." That may, that may be the case, but the fact of the matter is that with the certified tolls, you've increased taxes $6 million in your first term. Just last year, the city of Harlingen tax notice, which I would, I would recommend when you're out campaigning, I've said this before. I said it to Commissioner Mesmer and Commissioner Pettis. Don't tell people you didn't raise taxes. The official tax notice by the city says, and I'm going to repeat this, $2.536 million or 10.1%. That was for the city of Harlingen this last summer. So y'all raised $2.5 million, but yet y'all go around and tell everybody, "Well, we lowered the rate. It's the lowest rate we've had in 25 years." We don't pay the rate. We've already talked about that. We pay a levy. Y'all, y'all, y'all give us, y'all levy us. But we also talked about the city of McAllen. The city of McAllen, they had a tax increase of only $1.7 million. I know Commissioner Pettis, or Lopez, you said during the summer, you said, "Well, if you don't like our rate, go move somewhere else." Well, you know, look at, look at McAllen. They're 42 cents, 50-something cents here in town. They didn't even have to raise their taxes but $1.7 million, but the city of Harlingen had to raise it $2.5 million? The other thing is, y'all say, "Well, go file for it. Make sure you got a homestead exemption." And I tried to get this on the ballot for a charter amendment, and y'all, nobody, nobody took it. Why don't this, why doesn't the city of Harlingen offer a homestead exemption discount? Y'all don't. Y'all didn't even want to consider putting it on the charter amendment. Why didn't you? Y'all, y'all just wanted a pay raise for you, Mayor. You wanted to vote. You wanted, everything was about y'all, right? And then I look on here, and it says, "Well..." Then you go and you say, which is kind of hypocritical. You go and say, "We'll get a homestead exemption. You'll save some money." Not in the city of Harlingen, you're not going to save any money because y'all don't have a discount. Then it says, "Well, pay your, pay your taxes early in November, December." Then you look at the, the tax notice, it says, it says, "Not all units offer a discount." Well, guess who doesn't offer a discount for early payment? The city of Harlingen. You don't want to offer anybody a homestead discount. You don't want to discount anything for paying early. And then somebody said, "Well, you said, well, it's been the lowest rate." I was looking at my personal tax, and it tells you on the back for everybody that wants to look. It says, "Well, what was the city of Harlingen change for my personal property?" Because I was told that it's the lowest rate in 25 years. Well, it says it was, it went up 6%. Well, we know that the levy went up 10% based on the official city notice that's required by state law. Yeah, you just have a multi, a social media department tell everybody that we lowered the rate because that's not regulated by state law, and we can just smoke people and make them think that we lowered taxes and then campaign on it. I'd like a little bit of extension since you gave the last person.
Thank you, Mr. Lefwitch.
Let me just tell y'all that y'all, let me just tell y'all that y'all changed the behavior at the appraisal district. The appraisal district now...
Mr. Lefwitch, you're out of order. Thank you so much.
Oh, I see. It's all right. If somebody else wants to go, it's okay.
Thank you. Next, we have Edward Rocha.
Hello, Edward Rocha. Live in Harlingen, 538 Lake Drive. I'm here about Tony Butler Golf Course. I thank you commissioners for helping us with the 4B Board when we got our money. There's definitely an improvement at the golf course. And I do want to thank Mr. Garcia, Oscar Garcia. He came to one of our meetings, and he listened to me and to the commissioners, and he says, "You will see a change." And you do see a change now. He went, brought an excavator, cleaned around the ponds. If you go out there right now, it looks beautiful. Everything's getting there, except our staffing. Our staffing is, unfortunately, they need staffing. And because people are lining up, I've gone in there and just sit down and just sit there and watch, don't say anything. And I see the lines getting long, and sometimes the same thing. The kitchen's not open, or they don't have enough supplies. And we just need staffing. We need better staffing, more staffing. It really needs an assistant. Jeff is, Jeff Hart is doing a great job, but man, he's just, it seems like everything's on him, everything's just directly on him. He needs more people. I think he needs, me personally, I think he needs an assistant plus more staffing. And because it's starting to show, you built it, and they will come. And that's what's happening. The golf course is looking pretty. I see people, I've seen Winter Texans, I sat next to them, not saying nothing. I've heard them say, "Hey, this golf course is looking great. Wait till next year, it's going to be a lot better." And we're getting there. And, 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 but Oscar, again, I can't thank him enough because he's, you go out there and you can see how beautiful it's starting to look. And of course, there's always going to be work to be done. The golf course, you can't let it go. I just came back from Laredo. I went to two golf courses there with my son with the Harlingen Cardinals. We played one golf course, it was Casablanca, it was beautiful. No, I take that back to Max. It was beautiful. I think it's privately owned. Then we went to the Casablanca, which is city-owned. And I went there one year before, and I went this year, and it just looks terrible. It just, it don't take much. If you don't stay on top of it, the golf course will just, it'll turn on you, and then people will turn on you. But again, I thank you, and just remember, quality of life. It's there for everybody, for the kids, the senior citizens, Winter Texans. So let's just, please stay on top of it and definitely help our golf pro Jeff Hart get his staffing, and let's keep it going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, we do have a few citizens that were unable to submit their citizen communication, but would like to have the opportunity to speak on their topic.
And you have the...
Yes. Okay. We begin with Ms. June and Edith. June and Edith?
Or just June. I see Edith saying, "Not me." Okay.
Do you want to come up one individually? That's fine.
Here's the backup.
To be honest, I'm not prepared, but is this regarding the support of the trail?
Yes, it's on the trail.
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, in behalf of the group, Edith and I have been leading a group of runners and walkers. Ms. Sandra is also here. We enjoy that we do have a trail in Harlingen. McKelvey's a beautiful trail. However, it's been the same for a while now that an extension of the trail from Ramsey Park to McKelvey would be beneficial for not just us, but for most people. Especially that being outside has not been safe. People have been hit being outside riding or cycling. So having a more, a trail inside McKelvey and expanding it would really help us out.
And we talk about quality of life, the improvement of health. It's not just for runners. I mean, you know, you can go out there as a family, experience nature, and it just improves not only your health physically, but mental health as well because you go to a place where you can actually just relax. I've been going out there for the past five to eight years myself, and you know what? It has been very beneficial, not only personally, but only as well as being able to connect with other like-minded people. And so we'd like to request to see if you can consider, continue with the study to connect that McKelvey to Ramsey's, to continue to see that it is a feasible feat for the Harlingen to take upon themselves and see if they continue with it. Because let me tell you, I'm sure that it's not just that one group of people are going to benefit from it. It's going to be a large, larger group, a larger scale of people. And I know the last time it was a tied vote, but we'd like to consider, or for you all to consider, that it is not to put it on the wayside, but to also consider how broadening or how big of a picture it's going to enable other people to benefit from being out there in the trails. It's beautiful out there. I know right now it's cold. You're probably thinking, "Why are we going to be out there?" Trust me. When I first started going out there, I was like, "Oh, gosh, this is not for me." But when we're out there, it looks very pretty. There's a lot of nature going, going out there. And not only that, you feel good. I mean, you feel good, you're peace of mind, and also it benefits the city as a whole when you have, you know, healthy people, healthy-minded people as well.
And I'd like to add about, about our trail. It's a special trail wherein the terrain is not as flat. If you go inside McKelvey, you'll be surprised. I've been in Harlingen for 20 years, and it's just recently, early, early last year, where I really went inside the trail and how beautiful the trail is. In fact, there was a group, the beginning of January, the first weekend of January, we're in this group from McAllen, Brownsville, that they all gathered in to just open up the year 2025, where just seeing how beautiful the trail is. That's it.
Thank you both.
Now we have Mr. David Hernandez.
All right, good evening, Mayor Sepulveda and Harlingen City Commission. I guess my comments are going to be kind of in the same vein. I'm, I am in support of Item 10N, which is the approval of the feasibility study for Phase 3 of the Harlingen Arroyo Trails. I think this is really good. This expands the trails, which are over 25 years old. They were constructed back in 2001 and in the year 2000. So I think it's really time to continue the progression that's happened in the city of Harlingen. I lead an organization called the Valley Offroad Bicycling Association. We're affiliated with a local chapter of the International Mountain Bike Association. And we've been fortunate enough to bring in mountain bikers from all over the country, as well as Canada and Mexico, to our small town of Harlingen, and they totally enjoy our trails. So I, I see that as a continuation of that expansion. If you go out to our trails in the evening, you're going to see our local citizens, people that are trekking in from the Upper Valley, from Brownsville, that are also enjoying the trails. We have one of the most unique resources here in the middle of our town with the Arroyo Colorado and the trails that we've built around it. So I'd like to see us continue that expansion. Just to give you some statistics, we do have a trail counter that's located right behind the Sames Ford dealership. That's affiliated with the Texas ANM Bicycle Pedestrian Exchange Program. Since 2017, we've seen year over year about a 400% increase in pedestrian bicycle traffic. So people are using these trails, whether they're our local citizens or they're people that are coming in from, from other places. So I see the continuation with Phase 3 as, with that expansion, as... So I see the continuation with Phase Three as, with that expansion as broadening the reach of the trail system. If you also think about transportation needs, you know, consider residents being able to go from Hugh Ramsey Park all the way to Dixieland, whether they're walking, running, walking their dogs with strollers or on bicycles. And for a lot of our residents, that's their mode of transportation on a bicycle. So this would definitely connect different parts of the city with that type of construction. Just some other things that I wanted to make. There's a little bit of a misconception by some of the residents that see the trail as an infringement of their property, you know, of their privacy. If you do a study, if you look at maps and look at the topography, you'll see that a lot of those properties are about 15 to 30 feet above where that paved asphalt hiking bike trail would run in Phase Three. And I think that would come out in the feasibility study as well. So I think that would alleviate a lot of the fears that happen. And the last thing I'll end with is, there's a lot of history in the trails. If you think back to the 70s and 80s, you know, there was a motocross track at the old McCullough Park and as well as Hugh Ramsey. So the last thing I'll end with, even Mr. Leffwitch enjoys riding the trails. So I think he would enjoy it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Next, we have Ms. Sandra Rodriguez. Rob Forbes.
Thanks for having me. And I was not prepared for this, but when June asked you to do something, it's hard to say no. But I was in athletic gear and now I'm at a city hall meeting, but it's oddly relevant. I can't say a whole lot more that hasn't already been said, but I will tell you this. The sum is greater than the whole. If you take those two trails and you add them together, you have something that's pretty special. I flew for about 12 years in the Air Force and I'm a pilot with American now. And I've been to at least 110 different countries. And I can tell you that those trails are some of the nicest ones that I've had the privilege to walk on. And they're right here. You know, McAllen and Brownsville are bigger. They probably, if we're being honest, have better food. Not, no offense. But we're nicer.
Offense taken.
Harlingen is the nicest city out of the three, in my opinion. It's the quietest. And if we can lean into what we're good at, I mean, we put on a heck of a marathon. If we can have a place for runners and cyclists and hikers to feel comfortable and safe, and then also people who commute, who don't have a car, like my daughter, that would be awesome. So yeah, I think if you take a look at it and see that that little piece that's going to join it, I've walked along that area. There's ways that you can make that happen to where it's not going to infringe on somebody's privacy. They're down below, you know. But any case, yeah, that's it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, that concludes our citizen communication.
Thank you, Ms. Melinda. Moving on.
So next up, we have approval of minutes, item 6A, Special Joint Meeting of the City Commission and Harlingen Airport, December 12, 2024.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven, Consent Agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, is there anything to remove from the consent?
I have a question or two on D.
You want to remove it?
Yes, for now.
All right. Any other items, gentlemen? Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Submit Pre- and Final Grant Applications to the Texas Department of Transportation, 2025 Transportation Alternatives. Set aside call for projects, special projects.
Thank you. Is this all geared toward the Grimes Avenue North Sunshine Strip along Loop 499?
Yes.
See, there's a major, if nobody's seen it yet, a lot of congestion, traffic congestion on Ed Carey Drive and what I used to know as Highway 83 along the Medical Center, Harlingen Medical and so on down that line. When are we going to try to do a study for that?
It's up to you if you would like to swap that project for this one. This is specifically the TA, is the transportation, transportation set aside, is active transportation funding. So hypothetically, if you would like to add a shared use path or a trail or sidewalk infrastructure, you could add it potentially at another location.
I like that. Now, speaking of sidewalks, sidewalks on the south side of the Frontage Road where we have residents from, there's patches that are bare between Ed Carey Drive and Rangerville. That's where the kiddos are dropped off for school buses, via school buses and picked up. And when it rains, there's a lot of water on that road. So I would like to, I need that for them and a study for that area that's filled with congestion, traffic congestion.
That's an autism, right? So could you use TASSA money for that?
Yes. The only concern will be the right-of-way, if we have enough right-of-way to actually build a sidewalk.
This is on the south side.
Yeah, like Aguilad's Meat Market, all that.
All the way.
Wait, the south side of what?
South side of the expressway.
Where?
Between Ed Carey Drive and Rangerville Road.
I don't know that Ed Carey touches Rangerville.
It doesn't. It's the Frontage Road. You go west on Ed Carey Drive all the way to
So who owns the Frontage Road, the city or the state?
More than likely, the state, Techstat. And so that's also a consideration, like we're not technically the owners. So we will have to either confer with Techstat and get permission from them to do that.
And as it is now in D, is that what we are doing for another section of Ed Carey? We're asking the state?
Well, no, because it's actually being built not on the actual Techstat right-of-ways. It's actually built on the city right-of-way.
Okay, so this is city right-of-way?
Yeah, for the project that we're proposing, the section that Commissioner Morales is talking about, that I wouldn't be able to answer that right now. I don't have that information.
But you're ready to go with this?
We're ready to go with that one. Yes, the one that is being presented to you.
So I do share the concerns that Commissioner Morales has for that area. And I understand, I just don't know that, I think we would need more information to know if there's a possibility because of where that's located. But you're talking about all of the issues with those, in those neighborhoods, right?
Correct.
What we can do is we can get with Techstat to see what their plans are in the future because they did have a lot of sidewalk constructions. They didn't, unfortunately, they didn't get with us to determine where to build them. They just built them. And then, I mean, it's their right-of-way. So and so we could actually check with them to see what their plans are for that section that you're concerned about, to see if they plan to build sidewalks there. And if not, then maybe we can add it to a future study to actually get that identified.
So that would be near future, future, future?
Well, it's Techstat. So there's never any near.
Future, future.
We've been talking about certain things over a year. I don't know.
And where would you think we stand with the traffic congestion on the medical side?
Well, they're already planning to do medians on Ed Carey all the way through. And now the only, they've got concerns because some of that expansion would pick up private property. So they'd have to acquire it. So they have to deal with that issue.
Excuse me, is Ed Carey State or Harlingen?
It's State.
It's State Highway?
Yes. And then the concern that I raised with them was lighting on the medians. And they said that they don't do lighting on the median. So I asked them, "How did you do the lighting on State Highway 100 in South Park, which is a state road and it has lights?" And they said they didn't, they didn't know. They get back to me. So I'm still waiting for, that was over a year ago.
Future, future.
I mean, we could always, we could go back and try to put something together for that area and see, we could submit it, you know, potentially for another, you know, another grant that opens up. Or we can wait for the next project call to submit for this same grant for that project.
When would be the other project call?
So this same grant, it opens every, I want to say every year, every two years. And then we also have the RGB MPO. They have a TASSA project call. And so they also do alternative transportation or active transportation projects.
Can you stay on top of that, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, we don't want to forego on the opportunity to do this project. So is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Anna.
Moving on to item eight, Staff Reports and Other Discussion Items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item 8A, City Manager's Report.
I don't have anything to report.
And on these, I'm going to take a little out of order just because we, I know we have a lot of people here, just so that way we can be respectful of everyone's time. So at this time, I'm going to hop around and move to item 8C, Presentation by Ralph Vela, Executive Director for the Workforce Solutions.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for the invitation. My name is Rafael Vela. I am the Executive Director for Workforce Solutions Cameron. And if Mistress Avia's behind me, I was Iron Maiden, opened up for Judas Priest in 1981 at the Villarreal in McAllen, Texas.
That's not music.
Queen, 1983.
That's not music either.
That's rough.
Fighting words here.
So I want to extend my regards on behalf of our board. We have a 27-member board and 140 professionals that are workforce professionals that tend, Mr. Sassi, how are you, sir? That tend to the workforce, the individuals who we provide service for. I am pleased to be here. There was a little boy named Philamon who was a block away from a girl named Blanca in Fair Park. Those were my parents. In the middle 60s, I popped out and with my brother and my sister. So it's really wonderful to be here in front of you. I live in Brownsville. My heart is here in Harlingen. Our objective today, in the case of the workforce, it is, there are a couple of things that are valuable. A person either needs tangible or intangible tools to do their job. So my objective today, let me be bold and ask for another opportunity to come address the commission or even a workshop of some kind, a workshop on workforce. Because today, I'm just going to give you kind of a introductory to what workforce is. But my objective today is give the commission some intangible tools that I hope that you all feel are useful to the work that you do, which is critical. Every one of the commissions in our county, the work that's done here is critical to the mission of the future of our region, the future of workforce. I also want to shout out, there are three commissioners in the Texas Workforce Commission, but there's only one from Harlingen, Texas, and his name is Albert Trevino. So not only, but it's worth mentioning that all three of the commissioners, including the chair, have roots in the Rio Grande Valley. So for what that's worth, but especially for Albert. So I have a couple of images for you. This is, I want to share three things with you. One, give you an introduction to the workforce board is. Two, tell you a couple of facts that influence the work that we do. And third, the star of the show is the jobs. And I want to share with you the labor market information currently that is reflective of what's going on in Cameron County. And I'm going to go through this quickly out of respect for your agenda. And this is, I prefer in these days to simplify things, very simple definition of what workforce is, the number of workers potentially assignable for any purpose. That's Merriam-Webster's definition. Job creation yields three things. It reduces poverty, it improves industry, and it improves the lives of individuals. That's why we are here. It's worth noting also that the main engine for economic growth is industry. Sounds fairly obvious, but industry, industry, industry. We work, if you go to the next one, we work under the rules of the Texas Workforce Commission. This graph that you, this image that you see here, there are 28 workforce boards across the state. If you look at the further south, number 24, that is Workforce Solutions Cameron. Our service area is the county, essentially the county. So the law that established the workforce boards the way they are today also authorized the county judge and the mayor of the largest city. If you look at these, if that image, for example, if you look at the top in the panhandle, number one, those are all counties. There's 254 counties in Texas. That workforce board up there, one of my colleagues that runs that area right there has, what is that, 12, 15 different counties with 12 or 15 different county judges?
26.
26? Well, we're the only one county board. And so our 27 members, half of them, 60% are private sector individuals and the other 40% are public sector. The county judge and the mayor of the largest city, in this case, Brownsville, appoint that board. From a financial perspective, the Department of Labor, every year, Congress passes a bill, Department of Labor shifts that money down to each state. In the case, in our case, the Texas Workforce Commission chops that up to each of those 27 boards, the 28 boards that you see on that previous slide. These are our current Board of Directors. Again, 60% are private, 40% are from the public sector. They are geographically arranged from La Feria all the way down to Brownsville. We, I mean, let me just skip to, stay on that slide for just a second, if you don't mind. Of the 40%, know that we are represented by education, by individuals, by law, individuals in education, the Liberty Councils, economic development, vocational rehab, public employment services, adult continuing education, organized labor, community-based organizations, public assistance, and childcare workforce. All that, not in, that doesn't include the 60% private that are leaders of the other, the remaining 14 or 15 private sector companies that represent us. Okay, if you go to the next one, I want to introduce you, this is the Workforce Continuum. And I share it with you, I want to give you the definition. A definition of a continuum is a sequence in which adjacent elements are not perceptibly different from each other, although their functions may be quite different. We tend to equally to each one of these pieces of this continuum. So K through 12, it's actually 0 through 12. That's a typo in our case. The workforce begins when a person is born, when an individual is born. And I say that because childcare is so expensive for individuals. So our commitment for that particular component is if there's an impediment to an individual getting work, because we all know how expensive it is to send somebody to childcare, that's an impediment, we step in. And there are 180 childcare centers, many of here in Harlingen that we provide service to, for, and we partner with, that provide that very important service. So K through 12, we depend on the training partners like TSTC, TSC, and all the private partners that we have to train those K through 12 and the other individuals who are interested in upskilling. And then, of course, the relationship that we have with our partners is extremely important. So very quickly, factors that influence the work that we all do in our community. The next one, please. So median household income. Most economists globally, it's not the only factor, but turn to median household income as the one most important metric that indicates the health, the health and the well-being of a region. I believe, as a sixth-generation Rio Grande Valley guy, that we live in a region that is well. that we live in a region that is wealthy beyond measure. We speak in two languages. We're smarter, we're more productive, we're industrious. The list goes on and on and on and on. This right here, though, is one of the struggles that we have had to face for many generations. And I introduce it to you, not introduce, but reintroduce it to you. The yellow line is household income for Cameron County. The blue is Texas and the red or pink, I'm sorry, the, the pink is Texas and blue is United States. So you'll see from 2012 to 2022, that sustained gap between where we are and where the rest of the state and the rest of the country is. That right there is really tantamount to the core of the work that we do. So median household income, if you can, there, there's, there's average and other ways to define it. But median is if you think of a point along the line, 50% of the population earns less and 50% of the population earns more. So the question is why? So in our estimation, all the research, there are tier one and tier companies that are, that are present in other parts around the state that generally yield occupations that, that offer higher paying jobs. That right there is what we need, tier one, tier two. Another factor, the judge, oh, there you go, there's an image. Can you go back to that one that, that was, the one that you just had? The judge, Judge Trevino and I were at dinner the other day and he pointed out this, go back. Sorry about that. Nope, the one that's, shows.
The next one.
Yeah.
No.
Right there. Nope, next one. There you go, stay there. Don't move. So I wanted to show you this. They brought it up and we, we did some research on it. The x-axis is 2011 through, through 2021. This is a birth rate trend. And if you look at, just focus on the red ones. The red ones are border communities and the blue ones are non-border communities. So if you look at, for example, Hidalgo County in 2011, you can see that their birth rate in that year alone was upwards of almost 16,000. But in 2021, it has gone down, I think it's about 2,500, around there somewhere. And you can say the same for El Paso, Cameron, Webb, and any other border communities, probably the same. By contrast, if you see, if you look at Galveston in 2011, there was, you can see it's pretty flat. So there's something that's happening, not sure why. We have to look into this, kind of assess it. But fewer people are being born along the border communities versus non-border communities. So doesn't mean that there's less population, because we know the population is increasing. But there's something about, and that's a trend across the United States. But in Texas, where you see an increase in population, for whatever reason, you're seeing a decrease in new births across the border communities. Next? One more. One more. So can we switch to the Excel sheet? If that's possible? So what I want to show you now is where the rubber meets the road. What you're going to see is a, a sheet that shows in Cameron County, the occupations that are currently available to people in our region. So. Okay. So if you look at the top of this slide right here, you'll see personal care aides and so on and so forth. What we get are, there are 835 occupations in Cameron County that are available to the people who live here. Of those 835, you see personal care aides at the top there. If you take all the, all those occupations, 49,000 currently, today, are in healthcare. The second largest group, there are 18,600 jobs in education services, 18,500 in retail trade, which makes, makes sense, 17,600 in accommodation and food services, remediation services. Remediation services is like oil spills and things like that, but it appears as number five and so on and so forth. So I, I bring this up because this is all data that helps us work with individuals like Mr. Campos and his team at the EDC here. Because we, if you identify those jobs that pay more, higher wages, that should drive our collective objectives, our planning, our strategic planning and things like that. So I, I, I stand before you as somebody who commits openly, publicly that our job is to work together with industry to change the trajectory in terms of our household income. So thank you very much for the opportunity. Again, please let's consider this a first conversation about this. We can, so we can formalize a persistent relationship and rapport with each other so that we can move together collectively. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Not sure if that's allowed at this.
It is.
I'm happy, hey, there are rules.
Yes, there are rules, but yes, during the presentations, the commission can ask questions. I just want to thank you, Ralph. I know that you put the, you know, committed to do this just, I think it was last week, right? And so for those that don't know, you know, you, you are doing a lot of work already kind of behind the scenes and working with our EDC already and putting on these initiatives for young kids. And I had an opportunity to do the welcome at the LNG event that was at the municipal auditorium. I don't know if the gentleman is here anymore, but there you are. And so we are utilizing it to, to ensure that our young minds have the knowledge and the know-how to, to, to really focus on these higher paying jobs so that they can stay here. And so I really, really appreciate that you're, that you're doing that. And not just for Harlingen, but for the entire region, for the entire county. And, and being able to do that, we want you to know that you have a partner in us too. We want to make sure that we are doing everything that we can because that's the number one issue in our community, and I probably would say in, in the entire state, is that the focus is on higher paying jobs. So that way people can really just do the basics, right? Put food on the table, send their kids to school, have the basic necessities just to, just to live right now, just because it's difficult all across the country. And so we want to be able to do that. So I want to thank you for agreeing to be here. I know we had this conversation about, let's, you know, get in front of the commission. And, and I said, well, can you do it next week? And he said, yes. And then I got a message saying it was going to happen. So thank you and your team. And I think it's a wonderful idea to have a workshop and we can bring in the EDC too and the commission so that we can really, really focus on that. Because I know that everybody on this commission is, is dedicated to our community and wants to ensure that we are doing our part to ensure that there are those high paying jobs in our community, especially for those of us that have kids that we don't want them to, to leave the valley. We want them to stay here. We want to make sure that those opportunities are in all areas and that's where we can, we can partner. So thank you so much. I don't know if the commission has any questions.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Could I get a copy of this presentation emailed to me?
Sure, happy to do it.
All right.
I believe our, our, they, they sent it to us.
It's, yes, you have it in your possession or the staff has it.
I go with a hard copy, so I didn't.
I understand.
Thank you.
Whatever we can do, we're here to be of service. So please let us know. Mayor, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Good evening, thank you.
All right. And now I do want to. We're going to call up. 10D, presentation and possible action on the homeless study final report by Mr. Robert.
For the business owners that are here from the consortium, I apologize. I, I just, just told Gellin that I jinxed myself and I was like, this will be pretty quick. We're, we're going to move fast. So thank you for being patient, guys.
But I will say that the last time that we, I, I, you know, was invited to the meeting, thank Commissioner and, and downtown businesses and Alexis, there was a concern about homelessness. And I invited all of y'all to be here. So hopefully you don't mind listening to this study that I think is, is going to provide some information that you were seeking anyhow. And then we'll move on to the next item.
No, they wanted to hear both, so I'm saying perfect. So thank you very much.
Perfect, all right. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. And, and I'm going to go through really, really quickly this report because it could, it could be two or three hours if we went through each item. So I'm going to be skipping, I'm just going to do the top shelf items. And then if you, if we get into Q and A and go into some of the others, we'll, we'll hit there. And the, the key thing, when, when anytime you start a homelessness study, you got to find all the locations where people experiencing homelessness are. So I always start out by going to the obviously places, Gutierrez Park, Public Library, et cetera. Then Gabe was able, the city manager was able to bring all the top sort of frontline people in the city staff, police, fire, EMS, librarians, public works, parks. And then that gave me a list of about 43, 42, 43 places to go look at. Then once I finished that, then we did multiple police ride-alongs and then that finds some places that, that are new or pop up. And then after that, you do what sort of a, what you would consider a high-y grid research for when high-y centers are looking for people, you use similar protocols and procedures and you do that. So once you get all these locations identified, then you have to do both qualitative and quantitative research. You have to go do interviews and, and if you will, that may be more anecdotal, that may not be numbers. Then you do the survey work, which becomes very hard numbers, very precise numbers. And then after that, you go interview the service providers and then you start to see the gaps. You start to see the trends, you start to see it. When we talk about homelessness, a lot of people don't realize the federal government has 10 definitions of homelessness. And so I've, I've worked for three different presidents. I've been a homeless czar for both the Democrat and Republican. And the HUD has five definitions. Department of Education has five definitions. So there are 10 definitions. So a lot of people, when they're talk, are passing each other ships at night because you're saying, which group are you talking about? All of them, the aggregate, part of it and such. But this report focuses on two of the subdefinitions inside a HUD. That's often called street-level homelessness. And, and that encompasses two groups. Literally, they call it unsheltered homelessness. And I know, again, these are federal definitions, so they're not always the most common sense. But the, you have the, literally the people living on street, you know, under bridges, cul-de-sacs, parks, you know, behind big malls, shop dumpsters. Then you have another group of people that are in and out of temporary housing. So they might be on the street for eight days and then they're in an apartment or somebody's couch for nine days. And then they group their money together and they might get an apartment or a hotel room. So they're, they're partially housed. So they're in and out, they're bouncing between, say, emergency or non-stable housing in the street. But those are the two groups that candidly, where most of the media is now, most of the, you know, social media is talking about now. It's where, it's where sadly now is doubling every four years in the United States. Street-level homelessness is, that is just skyrocketing around the country for a variety of reasons. The next thing, when you start to, before you start anything on homelessness, there's no such thing as a static number, whether it's a state number, a federal number, a local, a county, a city, a sub-jurisdiction, a city council district, a city commission district. It varies widely. And there are two large cycles. There's other cycles, but the two, the biggest cycle is there's a monthly cycle. At the beginning of the month, when people get subsidies, whether it's unemployment insurance, SSI, Medicaid, Medicare, disability, that, that money at the beginning of the month is often used to go in and get a hotel room. So a lot of people get hotel rooms for the first 10 or 15 days and then they deplete, they run out of their money. And then they go either to the street or a shelter. So at the begin, if you ever do a study that's in the first 10 days, it's always going to artificially give you a low number. If you do a study at the last three days of a month, that's always going to give you a much higher number. And so there's, the numbers of all groups, especially street-level homelessness will vary. Most communities, the high and low number will vary at least 30%. The more expensive your hotel rooms are, that, that number becomes even a bigger number. Then the other big trend is an annual trend. Almost all homelessness is weather-related and north-south corridor-related. And so if you have a very cold area, people leave the cold area, move south. And then when that area becomes too hot, they move north to mild. So, so you have this sort of monthly cycling of a number. And then you have an, an annualized number that goes. So when you, when, I will talk a lot about ranges. I'm not going to give you, this is the exact number because it depends on what day. And, and you can almost look at the month as the first week, the middle, the middle, and then the last week. And they'll be just very different, but the chin lines will go there. So let's go quickly to the major observations, the qualitative, not, not the numbers yet, but just big observations. You all are in a manageable place right now. What you have in Harlingen is totally manageable. And when I took over Haven for Hope in San Antonio and ran that program, we were not in a manageable place. We were already at a crisis. Austin right now is in a crisis. Houston was in a crisis, they got out of a crisis, now they're back in a crisis. But you're in a place now that if you start doing the right things, you can get a handle on it. But I would bet if you don't sort of take action now, three or four years from now, you'll be at a place that's going to be very, very expensive. You know, some of you around the dais or in my age group, remember the old Pennzoil ad? You know, pay a little now or pay a lot more later if you don't take care of your engine and transmission and such. So you're, that's where you're at. It, it, it's a manageable challenge, but it's starting to become noticeably worse. I've been coming to Harlingen in my life, probably 50 years, you know, everything from sports in high school and visiting friends and family and relatives. And I've noticed the visibleness of homelessness has really started to increase here in the last 18 months. It, you, you, before you didn't sort of notice it, now you like notice it. The other big, big issue is loaves and fishes. By, by federal standard, federal definition, that's really your only homelessness service provider here. And they provide homeless services and homeless prevention or people at risk or near experiencing homelessness. There are other agencies that might provide a little here, a little there, but their, their scope is way more. Loaves and fishes does that. Loaves and fishes does so much with so, when I heard their budget and saw what they were doing for their budget, they do so much and so well with so little. It, it is, I, I don't know how they do it. I know some of it's volunteer, some of it's sweat equity, some of it's just that's their culture, but they do amazing things. And saying that, they also have a really nice fiscal plant, but they don't have the operating dollars to fully utilize it. So you have a fiscal plant that's sort of underutilized or, or, but could be moved up. And I really don't think you want to be building any new.
Fiscal plant? Just please define that.
Um, the building, the actual structure of the building, the camp, the campus, sorry about that.
I apologize.
Yeah, if I get too wonky, sorry about that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
There's 15 definitions for that too, right?
So they, they just do a great job with so little. But, but the, the good news is they got building capacity that with, with, with some, you know, some flow of dollars can be utilized. And I strongly do not encourage building a, you know, one of the things early on was, my question I was asked by staff is, do you need to build something? And you absolutely don't need to build anything new right now. You want to try to utilize what you have, use the ordinances and state laws and such. You have four geographical cohorts of, of concentrations of people experiencing homeless. First big one is under the freeways. And part of what I do a lot of is figuring out how many are in town and out of town because clinically you want to treat in-town and out-of-town people differently. We know, and everybody who's in a clinical practice knows that you get your highest success of treatment or getting out of the condition when you're around family and you're around a, a system that you grew up in and understand. You have a lower success rate when you are in a, just a, you know, a different place. The one exception to that is domestic violence. Anything related to domestic violence, that, that's different. In many ways, in domestic violence case, it's almost just pure. In many ways, in domestic violence case, it's almost just pure safety. You need to remove a person from that ecosystem and move. So, you have under freeways and around bridges, and that would probably include the mall area too. In this case, what I found is most of those individuals are out-of-towners. Now, you have some in-towners in that group, but the majority is, is out-of-towners. Loaves and Fishes turned out to be a surprisingly high number of people that were in-counters or homegrown, whatever, you know, high root, you know, high connectivity to your community. But also Rio Grande, Loaves and Fishes of Rio Grande, remember, they also operate as sort of a community kitchen. You know, they help the seniors on fixed income, they help the ALIS, which is the new term for limited assets, limited income. The old days, you used to use the term like working poor. You know, they have a job, but they, especially at the end of the month, they need the extra help. Harlingen Public Library turned out to be a really interesting one. That was, I know a lot of people focus on Gutierrez Park, which is a problem, but the library was a bigger problem. And then you have sort of the balance of city, everybody else there. I'm gonna skip a few things here just to speed up. Remember, north-south corridors move homelessness, people experiencing homeless in America. Homelessness seldom moves east and west, and that's because of weather. Gets inclement, you go the other direction to, to, you know, in search of milder weather. So, the north-south corridors are really weather-driven, and there's a few exceptions, like there's an interesting east-west corridor between Salt Lake City and Denver, and that's a, that goes through Wyoming, of all things, it's sort of like an arch. And there's some policy reasons why that has, happens, but that is the absolute exception. So, any cities on a north-south corridor is always gonna have out-of-towners. You're on a north-south corridor. You also are at the end of a quarter. You're at the end of a very long north-south corridor, and so, when you get here, you get some people stuck here. And so, the question at, at a operating level is, do you wanna welcome an out-of-towner and convert him into an in-towner, and then have that expense for a very long time? Or do you wanna say, for out-of-towners, the best thing is family reunification? That, that's where it drives your, your policy. Now, let's go to the survey data. This is real numbers, and I did an individual survey, and Loaves and Fishes staff were just super, super helpful, and we interviewed everybody. We almost had a hundred percent penetration of the, of the people experiencing homelessness. And I'll just go through some really quick demographics. You have seventy-five percent male, twenty-five percent female. That's slightly more male than the national average. The national average now is more like seventy-one, thirty-nine. So, you have a little bit more males, not, not a lot more, but a, a little bit more males than females. You have fifty years old is your median person, median age of a person experiencing homelessness with an average of fifty-three, sorry, fifty-point-zero is the average, fifty-three is the median. And that's a slightly older demographic, and that would, in that, when you look at the combined, you have a much higher chronicness level. And what that means is, you've had people experiencing homeless for a long time and have not been able to shake, shake it, they've not been able to get out of it. So, that means you're not providing the, the necessary treatment, recovery options to get, get people out of that. Now, the most surprising thing in the report that I found was, I was guessing you were gonna have a lot more out-of-towners, and you have more in-towners, especially around Loaves and Fishes and partially around the libraries. Your out-of-towners are mostly on the freeway. That makes sense, the, the north-south corridor. But people who've been, they, this, this was an amazingly high, like really, really high number. People experiencing homelessness, twenty-nine-point-five years average living in Harlingen. That's a really long time, with the median of thirty-one. Born in Harlingen, sixty-four-point-three percent of people in the survey were born in Harlingen. So, did, you know, again, deep roots. Sixty percent had, went to high school in Cameron or Harlingen. And I always think of, where you went to high school, where you were born, do you have family, is, is sort of how close you are. Family, you had sixty-four-point-three percent have living family, and another seven-point-one percent had family that's passed on. So, when you take those two numbers together, you had seventy-one percent. So, that's a much higher number than, than you see. But again, that's through that, that cohort there. This was the really strange number, because depending, you know, the old, when you touch an elephant, you're blindfolded, some people are touching a leg, some people are touching a tusk, and everybody's saying different things. And I couldn't understand why some group were saying, oh, most of the people are out-of-towner, and other people were saying, most are in-town. And it depends on where you look. If you look on the freeway, it's out-of-towners. If you look on the inside, then they're, and then I, when I was doing ride-along, the police officers would say, I don't recognize that person. And so, like, they look, which would imply an out-of-towner. And we got into the survey, one-third of the people who were born in this county left and came back. Often, they left, started experiencing homelessness somewhere else, and then they came back to be with, try to be with their family, you know, to get support. So, it sort of made sense. But that explains why different people were sort of seeing different things on the, on the numbers. The, the, and then the, the mayor, like she said, you gotta get right to the key numbers here. So, here are the key numbers. Forty-seven to seventy-one people are in-town. And it depends on the time of month. Beginning of the month, it's around forty-seven. End of the month, it goes, it starts to get up to seventy-one. You have ten to fifteen people regularly living in Loaves and Fishes. And you have thirty to fifty-three people that are out-of-towners. Again, it, it surges through the, the month. And the, the chronicness was a real surprise, that the average of time of a person experiencing homeless, has been experiencing homeless for six-point-two years, with the median of five years. To give you an idea, Nebronfels and San Marcos, using the same survey instrument, those numbers were closer to three and a half and four. And so, that, again, that indicates that you have people here, they, they have some family ties, but they're not wanting to get, either their family has said, you know, we, you've burned all our bridges, and we don't, you know, we're not gonna have you here anymore, or self-selecting, I don't wanna follow my family rules. And it's normally around drug use, that, that's normally, not always and not, not all the time. But remember, most substance abuse at a street level is self-medicating connected untreated mental illness. Again, that's what, nationally, that number's about seventy-five percent. So, not everybody falls in that category, but, but a large number. So, what do we do about it? So, what are the recommendations? And I'll be doing a final report, probably in the next, you know, a paper final report will be done in the next week to ten days, and, and everybody will have it. I have four recommendations, and recommendation one has also four parts to it. So, there's like a one A, one B, one C, one D, then a two, three, and four. So, each of the, the cohort groups need a different type of work. So, under the bridges, there's a new Supreme Court ruling called Cities, City of Grants Pass versus Johnson, just happened about seven, eight months ago. And it basically says, local communities are better deciders of what to do about homelessness than federal justices far away. That's almost a line right out of the Supreme Court ruling. And before City of Grants Pass, you had Martin versus Boise. And that would have been the operating law for about seven years, and before that, it was Pottinger versus Miami, which had been around about twenty years. Pottinger and Boise basically said, you can't do anything with a person experiencing homelessness unless you have an alternative place to bring a person in, and the alternative place has to be significantly better than the current place that is. In other words, if you have a hundred people on the street, you can't do anything unless you have a hundred shelter beds. That, that's the old rule. Under City of Grants Pass, it says, you can come in and design different systems for in-towners and out-of-towners. You can customize it, family and children versus adult males versus adult females. You can set up different rules and protocols, if you have some logic of why you're doing it. You can't be discriminatory, it can't be willy-nilly, but if you have a thoughtful process of how you get to it there. And so, to me, we already know, we've had, I think, two deaths near and around the freeways just in the last, after I finished all my data research. I drove in today, we, we've, there was a person, a body found, and I don't know if that, it looks like that person's, well, have been experiencing homelessness, but you don't know until all the report is. But when you take the federal new Supreme Court decision, combined with the state, which is called Texas Penal Code, sometimes just called forty-eight oh-five, and, and some people call it House Bill nineteen-twenty-five, but basically, that says, if a person is not explicitly given the right to camp, live, panhandle, whatever, if they're not specifically given that right to do that, you know, in writing, you can go live here and be under the bridge. If you can't do it, the assumption is you're not supposed to be there. Whereas, four years ago, in Texas, it was the total opposite. The burden of proof was on the officer, the social worker, or the public works person, the park ranger, the librarian. Now, the assumption is, you don't have the right to live under a freeway or a bridge unless the state legislature gives you that right to do it. And obviously, they're not doing that. And so, the out-of-towners, under the bridges, is a pretty easy thing. That's simple enforcement. You, you use the Supreme Court ruling, you use the state law that exists. By the way, the state law says it is the burden of the city and counties to actually follow that. That's actually written in the law, you're supposed to be doing it. But until the Supreme Court happened, you really couldn't do it. Now, taken together, you can do it. So, under bridges and freeways, it's really simple. It's just enforcement. And it's a safety. Living in and around cars going sixty, seventy, seventy-five miles an hour with fumes and stops and no, you know, minimal stoplights and such, it's just a really dangerous place to be. So, for the good of the individual, the good of the community, we shouldn't be allowing people to live around high-speed intersections. That's just unsafe and such. So, I don't wanna say that's the simplest one, but it's the clear, it's, it's the easiest to understand. It's just enforcement, you shouldn't be living there, police should engage, you have the total right in the Supreme Court and under state law, you actually are supposed to do it. So, that's one A. One B is, we need to utilize the campus that Loaves and Fishes has, you know, Rio Grande Valley. They have a great fiscal plant, they have great operation, they have a great culture, they understand how to deal with this, but they are so short on finances, they need extra finances in order to start to use, expand their bed capacity. And all, when I write the final report, I'll give a, at least a starter number to throw something up, to start looking at that. And you not only wanna increase bed space, you wanna create proactive case management, you wanna be able to start working on the untreated mental illness, the substance use disorder, the job training and such. And by the way, and we don't have time to go through this, but the prior report on job training really relates, we, we did, we asked questions about, what type of job did you have before experiencing homeless, full-time, part-time, or no job? What do you have afterwards? Long and short is, after experiencing homelessness, unemployment in that group is seventy, almost seventy-five percent. And the twenty-five percent breaks down part-time and full-time. So, really, it's only about fifteen percent have full-time employment. So, after they experience homelessness, in some cases, jobs, now that you have built a little bit of a criminal record, some jobs won't take you, you know, they're not, not felon-friendly, some of it's that, some of it is, I don't have a way to get to work, some of it is, I don't have a stable housing place to go, but that's very interconnected to workforce development. Harlingen Public Library, again, we don't have time to go to all the details. Real early on, I, I called the city manager, and I said, I'm already noticing some issues here, and the city manager got right on it, just right away, and started dealing with it. And we need to come up with new house rules for the library. That's sometimes, you know, the rules of what, what you can do and not do. Right now, many people are using the bathrooms at the library, is the showers and bathroom, you know, literally bathtubs and showers. And that just, that's not, it's wearing and tearing on the library. It's also making general public not wanting to go into the library. It causes a lot of issues there. So, I think we need to relook at those rules, and the rules are probably not too bad now, but probably need to refresh them, but more importantly, we need to enforce them. And, and it probably wouldn't be bad for to have a PD officer come through every two or three or four hours, you know, some sort of, you know, and, and not spend a long time there, I don't wanna take them off their regular duty. But if somebody's over there and has, you know, on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, have a, you know, just walk through the library, well, I guarantee you, that will help lower some of those issues that are happening. Balance of city, this is mostly from local, it, it's probably about sixty percent local, forty percent out-of-towner. And this will be the toughest one to work on, because if you enforce the rules, you know, the, the, you know, the House Bill or the forty-eight oh-five, if you enforce it, and you say, all right, you can't stay here, then they'll pack up their stuff, and then they might move to another property. This is gonna be the challenging one. This is gonna be the hard one, because if, if you do enforcement without creating extra inventory, that's gonna be a challenge, because you're gonna, it's like moving the cheese. These are, the, the out-of-towners will move on. The out-of-towners will just really, they self, self-select out. But the in-towners, that becomes the challenge. And so, when you start to enforce it, it might need, candidly, it might need some new ordinances, but you also gotta figure out, where will people go? Because you don't wanna fill up the jail, that's not good for the jail, that's not good for the individual. But you also don't wanna say, oh, keep, keep camping out there, keep sleeping there. And these are the individuals that are causing a lot of that downtown problem that's had, you know, where they, they're staying three and four blocks off of the main streets of the main thoroughfares, and then they're coming in and causing problems. And so, that group does need to be dealt with, but if you try to do it with total enforcement without creating capacity in the system, it's gonna be a lot of moving the cheese, and it may not work. But when you do these other things, then I think you create some inventory. You don't need to create a lot of inventory, but you need to activate some of it. Number two, and there's a few places where families with children are, are around adult males and adult females, that's bad for a whole lot of reasons. I'll let you read that part in the report, it's called ACES, it's sometimes called toxic exposure to children. And, but it's enough that we really, you, you shouldn't have children eating with men and women, adult, non, non-family member, adult and family, they shouldn't be eating together at the same time. They shouldn't be getting services at the same time. They shouldn't be in a queue at the same time. So, we need to work on that. Number three, I really think we have to start saying, and this is the city, this is the agencies, that an out-of-towner and an in-town are different. And we need to focus on taking care of the people from Harlingen, you know, our family, the people that are here. And you don't wanna take care of somebody who comes in eighty miles away. You had a lot of people, when I interviewed on the street, who are from Oklahoma, New Mexico, you know, far away, not, not a few cities up, not, you know, Rinkington or San Antonio, you know, statesway. And if you, if you open up the welcome mat for an out-of-towner and say, I'm gonna give you camping equipment, I'll give you food, I'll give you this, I'll give you that, you're slowly, over time, converting them to an in-towner, and now, whose problem and challenge does that become? And that's not good for the individual. There's a term now being used that says, compassion without accountability equals enablement. And that's a, a new term that's starting to make its way around. And so, you wanna be compassionate, you wanna help a person, especially if they wanna help themselves, but there has to be accountability. You can't just give everything away, especially if you're an out-of-towner, because you're just saying, come here. And every phone call, every text will be, come to Harlingen, or come to place X, place Y. They take care of you, and they don't have any rules. You don't ever want that, because then you'll, you'll have a, you have an Austin. You know, go look at Austin if you wanna see what, that's compassion with no accountability. And then, the fourth... And then, the fourth is, the biggest problem I've found under the bridges and freeways is how many people brought food to people. I watched where, here you are, people zooming around those, you know, the Texas turnarounds going, you know, forty-five, and then a car just stops and hands out a meal, preboxed meal out. I mean, this was, one lady I met, she had twenty-five some odd boxes that I counted, and she had more around the corner, of just meals that people were dropping for her. Again, that's enablement, that's not engaging a person, and it's a very unsafe place to feed a person, it's very unsafe for there, and we've already now, when I finished all my research about four weeks ago, and we've already had, I think, it looks like, when the investigations get done, it looks like there's going to have been two deaths since then with that. So, I know I went real, real quick here, you want to do Q and A, Mayor? How do you want to, is there something, I should go in deeper, or what would you like?
Well, I just, I wanted to focus, not focus, but just, if you could provide, and you may have, you may have said it, and I may have not written it down, but you started off by saying that manageable in Harlingen, and so, can, and I know that you can't give us the hard number, but
It's a range of numbers.
Can you give us the range of people that are in the city of Harlingen that are experiencing homelessness, just, you know, on the street?
So, you got thirty to fifty-three that are out-of-towners, and I think that group, if you just do basic enforcement, don't enable, that group will take care of itself. And you want to help people get back to their family, because that's the best chance of recovery. So, I think that number will go real fast, if you do just change policy, change attitude culture. The forty-seven to seventy-one in-towner, that's where the hard work will be, because they're not going somewhere. And let me hit that a little bit more, when we interviewed that group of people, almost to a T, they said, I have family here, seventy-one percent had family here, and they go, but I can't stay with them because they, I've burned my bridges. Or, I don't want to stay with them because they won't let me do my drugging. You know, the offer's being made, I mean, these are families who want these, they're, but either because they burnt the bridge or whatever. And what was interesting is, many of them said, when the weather gets real bad, mom or dad, or brother or sister, and in two cases, their children, will take them in when the weather's real bad, but when the weather's nice, they don't take them in. They, to be blunt, they're triaging, they don't want you to die on a real cold day or a real hot day, but they're also not going to take you, they don't have the patience to take you and have you drugging across other family members and such. And so, we need to work with those families and figure out what we can do, and that takes some intensive case management.
And we expect that case management to be done by the Loaves and Fishes.
That's who I would recommend, they're the best suited, they do it well, they do so much with it, but they need some extra resources to deal with that. And that's right, so, let's look, that group of forty-seven to seventy-one, you got ten or fifteen already in the Loaves and Fishes system, you know, overnighting, so that real number becomes something, looks more like forty-five to fifty-five or so.
Thank you.
So, ten to fifteen are staying at Loaves and Fishes overnight?
Right now, yes.
And then, we've got forty-seven to seventy-ones that are what we can consider Harlingen, or at least locals within the RGV. Is that, what are your thoughts on that in terms of, and I don't know if you know, of neighboring cities, do you think that everybody's experiencing the same? It seems like a relatively low number, and I like the way you said, manageable number, because if you take off the, you know, ten to fifteen at the beginning of the month, right? You're going to have maybe thirty people that are experiencing homelessness that are not, not living, that don't have a place to spend the night.
And there, one way to think of that thirty-ish, is there, on January, on January first, they were experiencing homeless fifth, fifteenth, twenty-fifth, or there, whereas some only started really being on the street by the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, when they depleted their funds. And so, the only way to work with this group is deep case management, we have to work with the families, we really need to reach back to families and try to figure out, and every story's going to be different. I mean, life, life is messy, life is gray. This is not black and white, you know, just call mom, have them come down, pick it, that's not going to work. What do we need to do? And is it, do they need treatment? Is it untreated mental illness? Is it lack of job retention? You know, in some cases, people just, they won't go out for jobs, so that's why that workforce, I loved that workforce, you know, presentation right before, because it very much interrelates to this. Because, once you get a person stabilized with mental health, reduce or eliminate drug use, then the next question is job. That's literally the third thing in the sequence.
So, do you see, regarding like enforcement for downtown, do you see like, enforcement in other cities, do you do like, no loitering ordinances? Because I've been told by some of the business owners here, that you'll have someone just dropped off in the morning, and then they'll just sit in front of, you know, sombrero like all day, right? And then like at five or six, they get picked up again, right? So, how do you handle that? Or someone that just sits on the bench, right there in front of Lozano Plaza, right, and just hangs out, and then leaves like at night, right?
And the challenge becomes, the Supreme, and this is a Supreme Court issue, and they basically say, you can't make the condition of homeless be legal, but you have to make behavior illegal. And like one of the, like Gutierrez Park, I mean, that's a, you know, like, library is rules, Gutierrez Park, I can't tell you how many times I went to Gutierrez Park and I saw drug use or alcohol. You already got a law against that, both those, you're covered, you just have to enforce that law. You know, in some cases, you got the laws ready to go, and, and the state law combined with Supreme Court gives you a lot of, lot of tools that you didn't have seven months ago. When we first started talking, Supreme Court hadn't made their decision yet, and then they made their decision. So, you got a lot more tools now, but you have to enforce them. And, and I was amazed how many people I talked to in the city who was quoting me the prior Supreme Court rule. They were saying, Boise says we can't touch them. And I said, Boise went away on June twenty-eighth of last year. And, and still during my steady scope, I was in a lot of places where, you know, the street level, not the supervisory level, but the frontline worker was quoting, you know, Martin versus Boise, and saying, we can't, we can't enforce this or that. And I'm like, laws have changed now.
Yeah, I, I want to say, I'm thoroughly enjoying this. My wife has her master's in forensic psychology nursing, I also have a master's in nursing. I love Dorothea Dix, I damn Ken Kesey's book, I damn the movie, I damn the ACLU, and I damn the federal court system for saying its cruel behavior to lock people up in mental health facilities and give them healthy meals, air conditioning, heating, clean beds, and proper medicine. I damn them all. So, I thank you for everything that you do. I've, I've, oh Lord, I've been in the Tennessee prisons, I've seen it, I've, yeah, undergrad, fabulous psych nursing. I thank you, and I appreciate, and I totally understand.
Thank you very much.
So, Robert, can you expand a little bit? I think that might help answer maybe some tools that the city has in terms of Commissioner Lovis's question on how encampment is now not necessarily just a tent?
Yeah.
And so, I don't know if that might help.
If a person is sleeping in a place you're not supposed to, not designed for sleeping, sidewalks are not designed to sleep, they're designed for pedestrian movement and ride away or wait for the bus to go. But if you start bringing a pillow and a sleeping bag, and, you know, in the old days, it was defined by a tent, but now, if you're bringing your sleeping bag and a bedroll, and you're having no intention to using a sidewalk for what it's meant to be, that can be illegal now. And, and so, I always think you start with the tools you have and utilize them first, because right now, tools are not, the fact that so many city staff were not aware that, they were quoting me Boise, and they're, and I'm like, I was an expert witness for, for City Grants Pass, and I said, I think I know a little bit about this, you know.
What's the new law, the new Supreme Court? I could write it down.
Yeah, the new law is City of Grants Pass versus Johnson.
Okay, Grants Pass, Oregon.
Yeah, sometimes I call it just shortened to Grants Pass. And that was late June, literally, it was one of the last, I think the last six or seven decisions of the Supreme Court. And it was a six-three decision, it wasn't a five-four, you know, that, that said you can do it there, but it's not case precedent, it was six-three, and they said, so this is the law of the land. And it totally changed what's out there. And so, and you already had on the books the state law, you know, about unless you can prove you have a permission slip to be doing that or whatever. So, I think you got to enforce all that first. Follow, educate the staff, follow it, enforce it, and the great thing is, by just the ride-alongs I went out on, I'm talking to the police officers, I'm saying, you know there's a new law, you know, because we started in like early fall, it was the first time I came down and talked, and then middle of the fall. At that point, the Supreme Court thing had only been out, decision had only been out like thirty-five days. And so, once that gets educated, I think people can start saying, alright, we got some tools here, let's utilize them. And then, if you utilize them all, and you still got a challenge, like say you have a challenge on private property, I saw a lot of people on warehouse stoops, or the gin mills, or, you know, absentee abandoned places, that might be where you go in to, some people are experimenting with some ordinances now, and so, especially if you can get your volume up, work with Loaves and Fishes, and you don't need a lot, but say, say you just increased twenty beds or thirty beds, now you can go to a person and said, you don't get to sleep there anymore, but we will help get you help, and we want you to get your help, and then work with the family to try to get help. You know, this does need to be real case management, and every story's different. I mean, you know, and every, it has to be customized, it has to be, you know, heartfelt and worked, but you got to work it. And those, but those are going to take time to do, but it can be done.
I look forward to reading your final report and having time to just digest it and all that. So, thank you so much for everything, I really appreciate it. This is a new, a new issue for me, so, I love and all that education.
And I'll have this done in about ten days or so, I think that, you know, that's our target, maybe seven days, and then I'll be finished up.
Well, I want to thank you for, oh, go ahead.
Quick question, when you were doing your surveys and you're looking at the homeless population, I'm assuming, I know you looked at Gutierrez Park, because I was like the obvious location.
Oh, yeah.
Did you have a chance to look at any of the other parks?
Yes, I went to, I went to every park at least once myself, and I went to almost every park with PD ride-along, and I went to every park that was targeted by staff, the city manager was great, he brought like twenty-five frontline workers, we all had one meeting, and I said, tell me everywhere there's a problem. And it was like, at first, we had like eight or nine, and we sort of got stuck, and then suddenly, how about here, how about there? And I ended up having forty-three, forty-two, forty-three. So, I went to every place, and then when I did the Heidi search, which is just a grid search, I just went up and down and up and down. And to be honest, there were some places that people said there was a problem, and I went five or six times and never saw anybody there. And then, Gutierrez Park, when I started, people said Gutierrez Park was doing better, but when I went to Gutierrez Park, it was bad. I mean, you know, a lot of alcohol, a lot of syringes, a lot of drug use, and fentanyl, obviously. Fentanyl, you know, I think you've moved, you're, and sadly, you've caught up with the rest of the country, you know, you were still, had a lot of meth going last summer, and now, by the end of my study, you're starting to see a lot more fentanyl on the street.
So, like in your report, are you going to be, I'm just, I'm curious, on your report, are you going to be specific, like in what parks would it be a problem besides Gutierrez Park?
Gutierrez is the only one I saw that was that significant, so I put all the other parks in as the balance, I call it balance of city. And so, you're going to have a, what do you got to do for everywhere else? But, they didn't, the other smaller parks, and again, it may have been just the six or seven times I went, I didn't see it. And I went at night, I went on weekends, I went beginning of the month, end of the month, went on cold days, you know, that really cold day right after Thanksgiving, I was out of town, and I thought, I need to come see what it looks like on the coldest day, because that was real cold and windy and blowing that Saturday and Sunday. And, when weather's that bad, and somebody's still sleeping outside under the freeway or in the mall, that's, that person is going to be really a challenge, because they don't want to come in to help. There are a lot of people coming to help when the weather's real bad, that's why you always want to see the worst weather days. And so, so, you know, but if you want me to go relook at a park or something, I'm happy to, if you've got something in mind.
And did you see, I'm assuming that's the reason why Gutierrez Park has such a large population, because it's right close to Loaves and Fishes, right?
I actually saw more in a tie with the public library.
Okay.
Because the public library is where people get their showers and baths, and literally, bathrooms would just, I walked in and people are just full bathing and, you know, that, you know, the public library, and public library gives you protection from the weather elements all day long.
So, other than like along the expressway, did you see any other issues, like on the west side of Harlingen, when it came to the homeless?
But just a little here, a little there, and a lot of what I'd call absentee or abandoned houses, you know, like one, two, but not, your bigger like groupings were major downtown thoroughfares, you know, the freeway, and Gutierrez. That was your bigger numbers. And I'm not saying there weren't problems elsewhere, it was just like one or two people, but not like, normally, people think of encampments as five people or more, and you didn't, it just didn't hit to that level in the other places.
Okay.
But again, I'm happy to go, if you want, if you got a place and say, it seems to happen, it's Saturday at 1:00 AM, I'm happy to go back and check something out, if you have something you're thinking about.
No, I was just, I was wondering, because I've been talking to some individuals, and then, a lot of times they say is that, you know, whenever there's a park or something, they attract a lot of homeless people. And the only really place that I've personally seen a lot of, you know, homeless issue at any of our parks was usually at Gutierrez Park.
That's what I saw.
And I didn't really see it anywhere else, but so, you would agree with that, it's not really an issue?
Totally agree, I totally agree with you. And Gutierrez, I think, is not a policy or procedure, well, it could be a procedure, it's lack of an enforcement. Because you got all the rules there, everything I saw bad going on in that park, you got a law for it, it just need to be enforced.
Okay, thank you.
So, one thing, and I just remembered, one of the concerns that some of the residents in our community have are the fact that there is no place for individuals that are experiencing homelessness, whether it's temporary, or, as you mentioned, almost five years, right, people on the street, on average, is that there's no place to go with your pet. And so, animal, so, people that are on the street, I often see them too, that they have, they have companion animals, and I'm sure that they don't meet the definition of, you know, a
Service.
A service pet, although you could probably get it online really easily, but I don't think that they have, you know, that readily available. And so, one of the challenges are that, when it gets really cold in our community, we open up shelter space for folks that maybe, they can't be in their homes for a lack of heat, or if they're on the street, but there's an issue that is that, you know, folks that have pets. And so, I've looked around to the other cities in our community, in the region, and it's very rare that shelters, public shelters or municipal shelters are open up to individuals with their pets. And I would imagine because of the liability issues and things of that nature. But in your experience, have you seen any shelters across the state, or in any of your studies that have these open-type shelters where you can bring a pet? What are the challenges? What's the liability look like? Is that something that you would encourage? And if not, how do you serve this specific individual that has probably developed a bond, right, with the only person, or not person, but the only friend, right, consistent? How do you service that person if you don't provide space for their pet?
That is, I think pets for people That is, I think pets for people experiencing homeless, they actually have deeper ties than general population. And, and all I know, if you tell me you're taking my zacito away, I'm gonna, it's, we're at war. And, and I would bet that everybody who has a pet would feel that same way. And, and pets for people experiencing homeless are way more than emotional support, that's a huge part of it, because it's, for many of the people experiencing homelessness, their isolation, the fact that you didn't have a lot of large big areas, a lot of your people are one and two, and they all had animals. And so, the animal is, uh, is that, that, it's emotional, and I would argue probably most often even deeper, because they have very limited other healthy relationships. But the pets are also the alarm system. Uh, and pets on the street are your safety and security, because they wake you when somebody's coming in to go. And I always, when I do police training, I always tell, uh, police and first responders, fire and EMS, watch the animals. If you start to see more animals on the street, that means it's becoming more violent. More pets is about a six-month out leading indicator for more violence. And when the pets go from big numbers to bigger, when you start seeing Dobermans, Pitts, Shepherds, you know, really large, uh, and, and people experiencing homeless do not like large animals, because it's more to feed, and so it becomes an extra burden, so they prefer the, the much smaller, you know, ten to fifteen, twenty-five pound, uh, noisy dog, to be blunt, that's also their alarm system. It's their, it's what keeps them from getting rolled. And so many people, uh, so many gang-like groups know people experiencing homeless beginning of the month have a lot of cash, that's when they get their checks, and because they can't get banked, they carry the cash on themselves. And so, there's a lot of, the, the animals become that safety, security system. So if you don't create an answer for the pets, they won't come in, that's a barrier of entry. And in San Antonio, at Haven for Hope, we, we put two kennels on our campus, because it was such a big, it was, if, we had so many people who just said, I won't come in unless my pet will come in. And so, um, Haven, we have full veterinarian services, we got a volunteer operation, we do spay and neuter, we do vaccines, I mean, we do the full, full thing, you know, dental work for the animals. And so, so we go all in there, so there's one real close that's there. A lot of places in Northern California have found the same thing, and they actually have created courtyards in their area, so the people who are experiencing homeless, who have animals, they stay in the courtyard, and people who don't have animals stay inside. And that's how, you, you have to figure this one out, you, and you, the best practice is to be able to let the pets come in. But you gotta have rules, they gotta be spayed, neutered, they gotta have their vaccines, you know, they got, they can't be violent, you know, all, all that, but you gotta address this.
And down here, we're number one for typhus from fleas, we're number one in the country.
And you gotta, so you gotta get all that together, and it is a liability, but it's a bigger liability not to address it. If that makes sense.
So, okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, the, most of the people that are experiencing homelessness have pets?
Of some sort.
And, and for various reasons. And so, if they will not go into a shelter without being able to take their, their pet, then if we provide that service without providing the service for the pet, then it's not going to work, in your opinion?
It's not gonna work. You got, you have to, and there are a lot of ways to address it, you, you know, Haven for Hope is sort of Cadillac.
So how many millions of dollars would we need for a Haven for Hope? Just so that the community understands?
Well, yeah, Haven for Hope, which any given night has about twenty-five hundred people in all the programs, all the programs serving a seven-county area was a hundred and twenty-five million dollars to build. In two thousand and seven dollars.
Well, they did raise taxes to be able to do that.
Yeah.
But, but, um, so, so.
That's why you want to utilize the underutilized space. They, they, you know, Loews and Fishes, they, they're amazing, how much they do for their budget, I, I can't tell you how much, you know, you know, yeah.
Yes, we love you.
But they, they need help, and we also need to help them help get money out, you know, to publicly raise money too, and help them whatever way we can, so. And I have found, when you develop a smart thoughtful plan, and it, and it's well executed, I, I seldom see funding be the issue. I see NIMBYism always being a bigger issue than funding, to be blunt. I've, I've seen project, great projects die because of NIMBYism, I've never seen a great project die because of lack of funding.
One other question, um, is, of the people that you surveyed, were there a lot of veterans?
No, very few veterans. Veterans have already been taken, I, I don't want to say they all, because we found two or three, and, and like, you know, I can get you, I could go get you a voucher right now, and they were like, but then I'm gonna have rules, but it, it was, you only had two or three veterans in, in the whole general population, your veterans have really been taken care of well. And I know some of that was what Loews and Fishes started before, some of that's what the VA did, some of it was, there was a period of time, you had extra vouchers in the Rio Grande Valley for vets, you had vouchers like just, I'm like, can we take those vouchers and give it to somebody else? Nope, only for the vets, you know?
Jim Young's wife.
Yeah.
Shout-outs all day here from the DIES today. Um, but thank, thank you, that, that, that helps to know that, because I know that was another concern of the community, that we have veterans that are, you know, on the streets, and I, and I know that we have a lot of resources for, for veterans, and so solidifying those, those, um, those thoughts are, has been very helpful. Uh, again, I want to thank you for taking the, the time to, to meet with me, and, you know, to, to, and I want to, I know I'm gonna give a shout-out to Vanessa here for also making that, making the connection, it's important for the people that are, that are a community, that are experts, um, and of course, Victor from Loews and Fishes, and everyone working together, and I know that for the commission, if you don't know, I think you came out, um, I don't know how many times you did the, with HPD.
Oh, we did days of surveys, I went out at three, four in the morning, I did drive-alongs at all, all shift times, I did weekends, because you want, weekends are different than weekdays, but in the world of homeless, there's no difference, but the response is different, because some agencies are closed on weekends and such. So you, you gotta, you gotta look all the time on weekend, weekdays, night, deep night, like two or three in the morning when people are bedded down, that's by the way, the best time to ever count, because everybody's sort of where they're going. Nobody's roaming around at three in the morning, so that's a great time to, to do research. So, it's a, it's an unusual lifestyle.
Oh, I agree, I agree. But, you know, I, I just, you know, thank everyone for, for working with you, right, and, and it was a collaboration of efforts.
And I have to thank the city manager, he, he, he just opened up, anytime I had something, he just dealt with right away, and, and we, we literally had some problems in the library that popped up during the survey, that I said, we can't wait to work on that, so some things were dealt with immediately, so. And, and the meeting, when you brought twenty, it was like twenty-two, twenty-three people frontline, that was our, that just sped up the study so fast. Without that, it could have added months to do that, but instead, everybody's around the room, and everybody was just brainstorming and such, and so that was very productive.
So I would just ask the commission if you have any last-minute questions, to email them to Gabe, and then he can forward them over, because I know you had some, you wanted to see something in the report, if anybody has anything specific, and that way, um, he can finalize what he's got going, what he's got going on, but excited to see the, the final, final draft. It's nice to know that the city of Harlingen's manageable, it looks like the number is, is a lot less than I anticipated, a lot more homegrown than I wanted to hear, but we want to take care of our people from Harlingen, obviously, and so, um, I think this gives us the, the know-how, um, and also, right, the knowledge of who's out there. So thank you so much, we appreciate, we appreciate your time, uh, looking forward to the report.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the great questions, too, appreciate it.
All right, and now, the time is now eight twelve, and we are going to get to the next item very quickly, but we're gonna take a, uh, three-minute, uh, break, so, I'll be right back. The time is now eight twenty-eight PM, and we'll call this meeting back to order, we took a brief recess, and, um, as I mentioned earlier, we're gonna take things a little out of order, so that way, we can hopefully try, those of you that want to get home, get you, get you home, or you're welcome to always stay. But we are going to move on now to item E, presentation and possible action on the annual city events calendar, Alexis.
Tenney.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna pull up my presentation, so this is just for you all to take action to approve, to modify, to make any recommendations on any of the city events, this is an all department city events calendar, not just downtown, so just keep that in mind, okay? Alrighty, so for the continuation of this month in February, um, we do have our, well, this week is National Engineers Week, um, then on the twenty-second, we have the Animal Shelter Microchip Clinic, on the twenty-fourth, we have our comprehensive planned public meeting at the community center at six. On Friday, we have Art Night at Downtown, and on the twenty-eighth, Public, I mean, Parks Department is doing their stargazing event. Then the Arts and Heritage Museum is starting their exhibit on February eighteenth through March ninth.
Alexis, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
What, what's our role in Art Night?
So we don't have any specific role for Art Night, it's done by an organization, but we, all we do is the Downtown and Brooklyn District Office is just market and promote it.
Okay.
Yes, same thing for Market Days, for Market Days, from Fourth Street to Commerce, it's run by an organization of merchants and property owners, and, but we do the extension side of Market Days, okay?
Thank you.
So, Alexis, what are the downtown events that are just downtown events?
Orange.
So, yes, the orange, but we do have scattered ones throughout the year, so just downtown events is our extension Market Days, okay, Downtown at Sundown, our annual Christmas Parade, our Shop Small Saturday Sidewalk Sale, our Holiday Stroll, um, we do also have, um, well, Art Night, but we don't run that one, um, and just different, uh, events throughout the, the year that come up, you know, randomly, but also that doesn't count also the consortium events that we have downtown as well.
Right, no, I meant just the.
The office?
The monthly reoccurring, because I know you guys do all these great little, um, I mean, sometimes you, you get with the, with the vendors and decide, oh, we're gonna do this, and, or that, and that's wonderful, but what are the ones that are, you always do, that's Market Days, the extension, um, the, the city side, right? So there's that one, and which, what, what other event?
Art Night.
But that's not a downtown?
That's not a downtown, but just for my office, all year round, it's Market Days.
Market Days, okay. Got it.
So continuing on with March, downtown has Market Days, Parks Department has the Jalapeno One Hundred run, uh, the Chamber, we did include the Chamber of Commerce in the EDC as a part of our annual city events, the Chamber has their Women's Empowerment Night, we have an internal event for just city staff, or a Women's Empowerment Luncheon, we have the Parks Department doing Yager Jogger, Downtown at Sundown will commence on March, on the fifteenth, we have also another Animal Shelter Microchip Clinic, on the twenty-eighth, it's Art Night, and twenty-ninth, it's the EDC's Let's Get Down to Business event. In April, we have our HPD Autism Awareness Event at Long Sea Hill Park, every first Saturday, on the fifth, it's Market Days, on the fifth, the Public Library has their Cameron County Summer Activities Expo, then for National Library Week, the Public Library on the twelfth has their Library Week event. On the fourteenth through the eighteenth, it's Animal Control Officer Week, on the nineteenth, Downtown at Sundown, on the nineteenth as well, the Parks Department has their Easter Egg Hunt, the twenty-fifth, it's continuation of Art Night, and the twenty-sixth, it's the Microchip Clinic. Tentative right now, the Chamber is still figuring out their Noche de Vino event. For May, it's Historic Preservation Month, for May first, it's National Day of Prayer, May second, it's Viva Streets that Parks is hosting, May third, Market Days.
Question.
Yes.
What is Viva Streets? I know we have it as an event, but what's its purpose, what's its?
The purpose is to close down the streets and make it safe, a safe, uh, activity, uh, for cyclists or runners or anything like that, and so, what we usually do is close down Fair Park in front of Long Sea Hill, and so we open up the entire park, and we have a run, and we have also a, a bike ride.
Okay, so we do the Jalapeno One Hundred, we do the one on the, the previous page?
Yager Jogger?
The Lager Jogger, and then we also have Viva Streets.
Correct.
The Jalapeno isn't really ours.
By schools.
Okay.
We just partner with them.
Okay, but Parks partners with them as well, right?
They provide support, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Also for May ninth, it's not tentative, but it is confirmed that we are having the Mother's Day event with HCISD that we are supporting. Um, on May twelfth through the sixteenth, we have National Police Week, which the, on the fifteenth, HPD is tentatively, um, gonna host a ceremony for that. On the seventeenth of May, we have Downtown at Sundown, from the nineteenth to twenty-third, it's National Public Works Week. On the twenty-ninth, it's our State of the City Convention, at the Convention Center. On May thirtieth, it's Art Night, and May thirtieth, Parks is starting their Movies at the Park, okay?
So in May, um, and by the way, I love that you're doing this, so, thank you, thank you, um, and we've needed this for quite some time, so I really appreciate it. Last year at the State of the City, we did it on the thirtieth, and HPD does, has an event, um, for Memorial Day, and they always do it on the thirtieth, is that right? Do you know, Chief? I know Carmona's not here, but, and so, you know, they had to kind of, I think Commissioner Morales wanted to skip out on the State of the City, because he wanted to be at that event, and I had to, and he did, and he did, but I asked him to please stay as long as possible, but wanted, and, and so I don't want to put the commission at, you know, in that position, ever, and we want to respect that date. So can we make sure that that gets on the, on the calendar?
Sure.
And I don't know who puts that together, so that way we get, the commission gets advance notice, so that way we can make sure that the, the rest of the commission can be present?
Yes, of course.
And so, Movies at the Park and is at, at Long Sea Hill?
Yes. Okay, continuing off with May, I mean June, sorry.
Oh, my goodness.
June seventh is Market Days, uh, June thirteenth through the fourteenth, uh, it's the Barbecue Cook-Off for the Police Department at Bass Pro Shop, but that, we do have on the fourteenth, a tentative date for Brews and Tunes, if that is still, um, an, an idea for that date, okay? So that's something that you all can recommend or modify for that.
I think that would be a good thing, you know, give Daddy something too.
What?
Daddy's the father's.
For Brews and Tunes?
I thought you were calling me Daddy. Look right at me. What is going on here? Calm down, Danny.
That's gotta be the minute, too.
Yeah, let's get that from the minute, strike that, right, but, wow.
So Commissioner Perez says that it would be recommended to have Brews and Tunes during Father's Day weekend, right? So, uh, so those are just two events happening on that weekend. On the twentieth, Movies at the Park, and then twenty-first, it's Downtown at Sundown, Microchip Clinic's also on the twenty-first, and then Art Night. Then we do have a, um, Arts and Heritage Museum, um, exhibit happening as well, from June first through November second.
Question.
Yes, sir.
How do we determine, do we have a metric for which we determine success on each of these events?
We don't, as far as downtown, uh, we just have like.
Or any of the departments, does like CVB, do you all have a metric for success? Obviously, like the marathon, you sold out, right, that's successful, right? But like, uh, for the, the Viva Streets, do we have it, for, uh, Market Days, do we have it, Movies at the Park, do we have it, things like that?
Mostly these events are free, so we don't really measure that, because we do it just to provide a venue for citizens. Those that we charge, we kind of try to figure out, okay, uh, where do we, where do we stand on, on revenues, and so that's, well, we kind of use it as a metric, but for the rest of these, because there's no fee, we just told them.
And I think also, um, Viva Streets, I've gone every year, and it, it's a great event, but I do think that they need more support in terms of the city supporting it, and, and just getting the, getting information out there to the community that we are hosting, or we're holding that event. Because the people that always go, they, they go, they're, they're this, you know, the same ones, I saw Dr. Fontaine, he was there, his whole family, they went, they, they enjoy the run, and they brought family from out of town, and so it's, it's a great, it's a great event, um, and it's in a perfect spot, but I think that it would be, we would get, we would draw more of a crowd if we had. of a crowd if we had more of an effort to, to support the Parks Department. And I think that's kind of, it's not here, right? But we did hire an events person, and that person is
Oh, we did.
She came on board already.
Oh, fantastic.
Her name is Delma, and I think that we need to really
An events coordinator.
Coordinator. And ensure that she's speaking with each department, including downtown, and giving, and giving them that support, and to answer some of those questions, and to come up with a way to measure success, now that we have someone dedicated to that. So that way we can evaluate once we have some real, real data. But just by attendance, I think Viva Streets has been, has been successful. And it's a fun event, a family-oriented event.
And it used to be held downtown.
Yeah, I remember that.
It was a great event downtown, Viva Streets. Okay, so in July, okay, here we go. So July, we do have a tentative date for Freedom Fest, for either the 3rd or the 4th. Last year, we did have it on the 4th, and it worked out very well. So that's just something that you all can modify on that. On the 5th, we do have Market Days. On the 18th, Parks is doing Movies at the Park. On the 19th, Sundown. On the 19th, Microchip Clinic. And on the 25th, Art Night. And then we begin a new exhibit at the Arts and Heritage Museum on July 1st.
You think it'd be, again, this is just an idea, but do you think it would be possible to combine those two, like maybe once or twice throughout the year? The Animal Shelter, the Microchip Clinic, and Downtown at Sundown? Because you would encourage people to, you know, come out, get their chip, and at the same time, you know, hopefully stay for Downtown at Sundown.
I'm not too sure on like Animal Shelter staff, how that process would be, maybe Shannon?
We'd have to check with them, but I think we can do it. Is that possible, Shannon?
Anything's possible. We can make arrangements with staff, definitely. We would have to verify with our licensed veterinarian, because he would have to be on site for the vaccination clinic. But I'm more than happy to check with him and see if he'd be willing to do like an evening clinic.
Because we're already doing the adoptions on Market Days, right? We've been doing it every
We've been doing Market Days, but we did talk to downtown about once the weather started heating up because of the pavement and things like that, stopping Market Days and starting Sundown. So we would still be going, we just wouldn't be going to that daytime event because the animals are on the pavement and with the heat, it just, it wouldn't be good for them.
And so with this event coordinator, this person would then be taking over the management of, and the coordination of these events?
My, my thoughts are that she would offer support to every department within the city, but each department would still run their events, but she would help with the coordination of it. So she's not going to take over, because she and one person won't be able to do all of it.
She's in the media department, so that's going to be kind of her charge is organizing the media, because right now it's all over the place. So I think that's what she's going to focus on. And then making sure that we get out and market the event, and then have more Facebook Live events from some of the bigger venues that we have.
And just because it seems, and staff's doing such an amazing job, it seems like every day we have something going on, right? You know, whether they're improving the golf course, or we're doing something at Public Works, or Animal Shelter's doing something. How do we make sure that we don't lose, when we're doing social media, how do you make sure we don't get lost in the shuffle with the promotion of these events?
Well, now that we have the media director, every department needs to reach out to her and, and coordinate with her to cover anything that they might think is of importance to let the community know. And so it had been just Callista and Brandon for a while, now we have a fully staffed department. So that should be a lot smoother and cleaner transition from what we're doing now to what we're going to do in the future.
So I had a talk with Priscilla about content and talking about making sure that information is out and is out in a timely fashion and covering events. I don't know if you want to chat a little bit about that?
Yeah. So we've, what we have been doing for the past week is a communications assessment. And what we plan on doing is providing a platform where all of the departments are able to, our goal is to have a bridge of communication between city leadership and residents, and by utilizing social media. And we would like to be able to present this in the next coming weeks. But right now, we're still kind of in assessment stage. So, yeah.
Yeah, I guess going back to my question is, if you're having an event or we're giving, posting something about the city every single day, how do we make sure that the public gets adequate notice of Art Night if like on Monday, we're pushing about the golf course, Tuesday, tennis course, like that?
So a part, a part of this communications and media strategy is to have a series of podcasts where each department would come in, you know, the month prior. So this would be, you know, every, every four weeks, we would have city leaders come in for a 15-minute or 30-minute podcast, talking about what's coming ahead. And this would also be, it's a video podcast. And so what we would be doing is breaking that content down into about 30 pieces of collateral to distribute online. And the goal of this is to really streamline the communication, because it's kind of all over the place, and the department seems to be putting out fires. And this is, this, there's a lot of missed opportunities, but also the residents are really upset. And we, I can see that in terms of, you know, I saw one city commissioners meeting where there was a resident who came and said, I have a small business, I didn't really know about a Harlingen Marathon, I think this was last year. And, you know, people were parking in our area. And so, you know, they felt like they weren't told with an adequate amount of time to prepare. And also, people shouldn't be parking in those spots. But I understand that there's a big issue with, in terms of being able to provide a platform really for city leadership to be able to communicate directly with, with residents. And for residents to be, you know, in the know. So we're definitely working on that.
So Priscilla is working with, with her team to come up with a written policy and to present it to the commission for approval. So that way, everybody knows what the communication policy is, strategy is. And so most of those questions will be answered in, in written form. So that way, there is protocol and there is an expectation.
Yeah. I'm new to municipality.
Welcome aboard.
I'm learning, so thank you.
And whatever we do, we still can use TikTok, so it's off the
Oh, yeah, no, we, I understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so for July, the Freedom Fest, just keep that on your notes to tentatively modify for, for that date, 3rd or the 4th, okay?
Does anybody have any preference on the 3rd or the 4th?
4th.
4th?
I think 4th was very successful.
Yeah, there was this ton of people, and then the fireworks, yeah.
And it lands on a Friday, let's, I guess, take advantage of it. And it was, yeah, it was, I mean, I, I didn't get to get a speedo papa, because I didn't want to wait in an hour line. That's how packed it was.
I don't know what that is, but it's okay.
It is delicious. It's, I'm not going to tell you, so that way you won't go get one. But, so Alexis, I have a question.
Sure.
And I know that a lot of these owners are here to know and have, have similar, I guess, concerns in terms of downtown at Sundown. This calendar, you're presenting it to us so that way we can adopt and not modify, or?
You can modify.
You can modify, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So what is the strat, what is, what is your recommendation in terms of downtown at Sundown?
Sure. So this downtown at Sundown idea was to be only held during the summertime. So when we did that for the two months, that very first year, that we were able to, it was a very successful event. And people were looking forward to it. And with that, I got with city management, and we decided to move it to where it was another all-year-round event. Well, then all-year-round ended up being to where it tackled a lot of resources from the city departments, and having us do two monthly events now consecutively. And so for the downtown. So with that, we did meet with city leadership, and we narrowed it down to where it only was hosted seven months out of the year. So we got a little break from doing two events a month, and now we're going to pick that back up in March. My recommendations were to
Wasn't that to replace Blues on the Hill, the original song?
It wasn't. It was just an idea that you all had put together to where you all were able to provide an event that was during the summertime at a note, like the heat-wise, it was too hot during Market Days and so forth. So we were able to do like a night market for our community.
Yeah, basically, what happened, it was like about almost, what, three years ago?
Yeah.
It came up to, I had the idea, and then I put it on Facebook, and I was asking the community, what do you think about having a nighttime festival similar to Market Days? And the feedback from that was overwhelming. So once I got the feedback from that, I got with Gabe, and then our staff got together, and Alexis did a wonderful job in creating, in getting the idea and applying it and creating this event. And, yeah, so it's, it's, it's been great.
We've worked through a couple of hoops, you know, and roller coasters throughout the way. But within the change that we made this last couple, this last season, I think it's worked really well. But I will have to recommend just on staff resources and a lot of the, you know, consecutive events that we have, not just downtown, but downtown staff also helping at other city events. It could get a little overwhelming. With the September, if we get to September, if you all will see here, we, for downtown, we have about five consecutive weekends that we have to work, okay? And also, it includes parks, it includes public works, it includes other additional staff members that we might have to get, you know, to help us. But we have Market Days, we have Fiesta de Piñatas, which requires a lot of staff resources for that. We have Sundown that next day. Art Night, we're not affiliated with. But the following weekend, we have Market Days back up again. So, go ahead.
So what were the days, because I know, Norma, you asked it earlier, what are the days, what is the events that you do on a monthly basis? You said it was Market Days, but that's only the half from Commerce?
Yeah, that's it.
And that's it? Okay, so it's only one day that, that you guys would really have to, besides Market Days, if it's within the, that timeframe?
Correct.
So is Blues on the Hill still viable?
No, it's not.
It's dead.
Oh, it's not on here at all?
We have no dates for Blues on the Hill.
Okay. That's what you were getting at. Okay. I know, I remember it was going down from three to one, and now it's none. Okay. I, I, did you have something to say about that?
No.
Okay. Well, so I just, the Downtown at Sundown, I do want to take a little, just another, another moment to, I think there was some discussion from the business owners, and I'll encourage you to talk to them about actually working with downtown to help with staffing, if that's an issue. So I think it's pretty, and I don't know, I would imagine you would agree that it's significant that a large portion of their revenue comes from downtown at Sundown. And so it sounds like this is really keeping them afloat.
Correct.
And so we don't want to remove or minimize the amount of time that you're, the weather, I think that we all can agree, I've been there on Downtown at Sundown where it was too cold and everybody went home. So those things, I think you have to work with, with weather. But aside from, from that, making sure that we have that event and to give it time to be successful, I think is important.
And we need to be consistent, that, I mean, the only way events are really going to work, and for the community to be notified, I mean, we're getting messages left and right about Sundown. When is it coming back up? Is it the Saturday and so forth? So we need to be consistent, but we do need the support. And, go ahead.
The Consortium, I love that name because it sounds like Specter from like James Bond. I literally got a text message last night, the consortium wants to know where we're going to be on the agenda. I'm like, ah, wow, all right. It was pretty daunting, right? But it was pretty awesome nonetheless. And so they've been fantastic. They want to help put in the sweat equity, right? And that's kind of what we were talking about, is that we only have so many resources, right? And I don't want to burn them out, especially because DID, as we move forward, their role is, you know, historic preservation, which we've been talking about. We've been talking about other rules that they, the Texas Historic Commission Main Street Program, which, you know, we have that thing going on, right? And so it's like, how do we maintain downtown at Sundown? How do we keep the event going, but we can work with our business owners for ownership, for participation, and for, again, going back to that sweat equity?
And there's going to be some months, I'm sorry, that we can't have it because just the weather.
Because of the weather.
Yeah. And I mean, yes, we can't control that, you know, mother nature. But also, as a part of our Texas Main Street Program, we need to get volunteer hours.
Correct.
And in order to be accredited program, we need to meet that minimum amount. And if we can far pass that minimum amount, I mean, that's even better for us. But they want
What is the minimum amount?
They don't have it listed on their reporting, but they want now, they changed their new reporting this last year. And so that was a strike in our, in our report that we're just not getting any volunteers. And city workers that are volunteering their time are not counted for volunteer time. So we, in the past, have worked with the Rotary, we've worked with different, you know, nonprofit organizations to create these events for downtown and to bring in those volunteer hours for us. And that is our way of proofing, you know, to the Main Street Program that those are our volunteer hours. And that is what Main Street Programs are all about. It's about the community coming together and helping support our Main Street Program.
So in downtown, Alexis, what, you have four people that work there, and what are, what are their titles?
So we have redevelopment specialists, we have a promotion and events manager, we have a maintenance coordinator, and then myself as the director.
So the promotion and, say that again?
Events manager.
Okay. And then a marketing person, or that's the same person?
That's the same person. And I help with those efforts of marketing as well.
And redevelopment?
Specialist, so
And who is that?
So that's Norma. She, redevelopment specialist helps me with the relationships with the property owners and business owners. They take care of all of the incentive grant applications, making sure that all of the new facade improvements, signage and everything are properly well-executed before they get to me. That way, I make sure that everything is correct before, for our board to approve of. And it's a fast, you know, approval process for our property owners and, and business owners to get, to get them into their facade, so that way they can start their business.
Most of those employees are in the back, right?
Yes. So downtown just has a team of four. We do hope that Delma and the communications team will be able to help us, you know, with that offering support system for our events. But yeah, I mean, we, we do it, I have my secretary, I have my maintenance coordinator and myself, and, and my events manager running the entire downtown events.
So there's a secretary too?
She's the redevelopment specialist.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're giving her all these names.
Yeah, yeah. Well, she's a jack-of-all-trades too, so.
I love it.
Yeah.
Now, I'm just thinking, and I, and I've shared this with, with Gabe, and we're going a little bit off topic, so I'll just say this, that I think that you have a lot of talent here in the city, especially in that building that y'all are housed in. And I'd like to see, you know, instead of kind of working on these silos, that, that there's more collaboration with all three departments. And maybe that means a kind of a restructuring of how we do things. Because, you know, if you've got one person that is really good at, at events, you've got, you've got Edgar that is phenomenal, you've got downtown, and now you're going to have this, this coordinator. It's going to be important to, to ensure that y'all are working together in order to be able to support each other. And then remember that we all are one city. So I think that's important. And if you, you know, communications, I know that Brandon, he's not here, but but he is utilized throughout the city and, and he's just, he's just, you know, one person. And so we have to kind of be, be aware of that. And so I think having some type of organization and how we're going to use, you know, whatever that person's skill set is and, 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 and making sure that we are giving them the opportunity to work to their potential and not stifling them by any, by any means. And, and I think if we do that, then y'all will be able to do more and not just, I'd like, just like, you know, communications works with downtown, I'd like downtown to work with communications and CBB. And I know that sometimes it's all hands on deck and you have to, right? For especially like marathon and, and big events. But I think even if the smaller events, if we can find a way to utilize everybody, we'll have to kind of figure out the hot tags and, and all that good stuff.
We do that already for bigger events, like the parade real fast, we bring in everybody and-
And that's how, and that's, and that's really how it works because you've got, you know, events going on at parks and so you've got events, it, it just, it's too much and that's why things get lost.
Correct.
Because there is not an organization and there, and, and, and it just seems like, you know, there's so many great things that are happening at the library. They probably have, you know, somebody that is really good at promotions because I don't know about any of the other departments, but the library always has successful events. So we can learn something from them, right? And they're, and they're part of the city too. So I think that, you know, if we collaborate more and we work on that structure and, and that is gonna be, make every event more successful, including obviously the downtown events. But I went off on a tangent, so seven, seven months is, and so from what month to what?
March through September.
March through September?
Correct.
Okay.
So now, it got, I'm sorry, it got cut to six months because in October, we held our Bruising Tunes last year. So we had to cut our October event for sundown.
Next year?
For last year. Last year Bruising Tunes was held in October, right? And so we had to, that was an original date for sundown and we had to cancel it.
So now we're going to make sure that with our calendar-
Correct.
That we are, which was the purpose of the calendar, is that we don't have overlap competing events. And to that point, or is that, did you, did anybody else have any questions on downtown at sundown? Because I was gonna move on. Are you?
The one thing you mentioned earlier about the, the community service hours that we need, could you share with the commission all that information from the THC Main Street Program, the metrics that, for which we're judged by?
Yes.
And recent correspondence we've had with them?
Yeah, and I, I just submitted our, our last year 2024 annual report. So I will also be sending that, I sent it to you and Gabe and Josh and, and Oscar, but I just submitted that, so hopefully in March and April, we'll be able to get a, if we get accredited, accredited National Main Street America accreditation. But yes, there is new requirements and new rules for that, so I will share that with you all.
I had a question on that, what are the benefits of that? Like the Main Street and the Texas Historic Commission and all that? What are, what are the benefits of that to the city? Like I'm, I'm not, like I hear that we're trying to get that, but I honestly don't know. Like what are the benefits? Like what do we get out of it?
So we've been a Texas Main Street Program for about thirty years.
Yeah.
The city has. And the benefits that we get out of that is a networking of different Main Street small communities that are, you know, sharing the same goals that we're sharing. Working together, going to, to conferences, going to webinars. They, we have a email blast system with all of the downtown managers throughout the, the Texas Main Street community. We are also offered a Texas Downtown Association membership as well that we are also members of. But as far as that, that just shows that we are recognizing our efforts towards historic preservation, public improvement, and I, you know, shining a light in downtown. And that's what we are, and out of eighty-four communities, we're one of them within the state of Texas. And we also are a national Main Street Program. So we are accredited through the National Historic Trust Fund as well and a Texas Historical Commission as well.
So we don't get any like grants or anything like that?
We, we can, yes, I've been working-
Have we ever got any?
No, but this year we are working with Ana on creating a historic resource survey for all of our properties within the city, limits not just downtown, within the entire city. So yes, because we are a national, I mean, a Texas Main Street Program, we're a part of that, we're able to apply for certain grants as well.
One of the things we got recently, I think I told you guys, is in October, November, the THC came down with their architects to show us how we can better maintain our buildings for preservation, for appearances, right? And so what I like about the program personally is that it creates accountability and it gives us the guidelines for which we should maintain our downtown.
And a lot of people tend to forget, you know, of, you know, that we are a Texas Main Street Program and we have been for the last thirty-plus years. And it really has shown a great success over the last years of how-
How do we advertise it?
We do it through our, our promotion, our directories, we put on there that we are affiliated with the Main Street Program. We, the Texas Historic Commission too also advertises what Main Street cities are involved. And so it, it's out there, it's just, we need to showcase it a little bit more. And promote it.
So for thirty years, and I know you haven't been here thirty years.
No.
You're too young.
That's how old I am, so. I know, I know.
Well, wonderful. In, in your entire lifetime-
Yes, go for it.
There has, there's been no leveraging of this designation, ever?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to get off the ground, right? And that's why the issues that we're having here is about, like, what do they tell us? They said that the DID shouldn't be necessarily in like an events, an events committee. So that's why I'm trying to use the sweat equity that the consortiums wanted to do, which I think are phenomenal partners, and how do we keep downtown sundown? How do we grow to be an iconic event, right? But also get to have-
Support from downtown.
Yeah.
Which we-
And then we can start to plan for grants, we can start to plan for these other things.
Yeah, because our, our Texas Main Street Program is, there was a letter that was sent and basically saying, yes, you know, that events are, we are an event-heavy program. And that shouldn't be the case, it should be more of our community organizations working with us to support us.
It's only one event, isn't it? Just market days? That's the one that comes on, on monthly basis, right?
Market days on a monthly basis, yes. And then the ne- the next six months, it's from March through September.
And how, are we the only one in the valley that does, that has that designation?
In the valley, as far, no, Brownsville does, and then Rio Grande City does as well.
Okay, so McKellen isn't one of them?
Yep. Yeah, but we are the most active Main Street community that's within the Rio Grande Valley. Brownsville's about to lose their accreditation.
And how, okay, I'll, I'll figure that out.
Yeah.
So, nevermind. I have a lot of questions, but we'll just chat later because people wanna go home.
I know, I know.
So I think, I, I thank you for putting this, putting this together. My question, just on the calendar, is you have the convention center here, you have the Chamber of Commerce here, is this, is this a, a city calendar? Or is it, what are we doing with?
So I, I got asked to invite the EDC, the chamber, the convention center because they do host certain city events that we, you all as commissioners and the mayor like to attend as well. So I wanna make sure that you all are also in, in the know of these events and make sure that we're not also conflicting with their events. Because I know there was one that was last year that was conflicting with a city event, in a convention center event. So I, I don't want that to happen again.
Do they have to go through you to get on the calendar or can they straight in?
That's something that they can get with city management on if they wanna authorize me to do that.
So I want, I, I-
But I am the downtown director.
Well, yes.
Yes.
I just want to, so how do we know that, that the, that this calendar is accurate, right? Because I, I think I've asked, I, I always, I-
Right.
Poor Josh, I send him all of the emails because people ask, they say, "I wanna, I wanna volunteer my time and I wanna attend an event and I wanna showcase my, you know, whatever." Or there's nonprofits that wanna be involved and where can I find a city calendar? And so then I say, you know, "Thank you for, you know, bringing your, bringing this to my attention. I'm going to dedicate, I'm gonna send you to Josh and Josh tells them what's available." But if this is gonna live on our website, can we ensure that it is, that it is accurate and it's updated? But that's not gonna be you, right?
You have the events coordinator?
Shouldn't be, yeah, I was gonna say, shouldn't be the events coordinator?
So, so, okay.
Now, the one thing, Mayor, that I have to point out though is that it's going to be accurate with all city events because once you approve it, we can't change it without coming back to the commission.
That's what I don't want.
Yeah.
And that's exactly what I asked because-
And it can cause just repetitive-
That's, that's, I think that's problematic because what if, yeah, and we, we only meet twice a month and, and we don't want it to be like-
Then we'll have to have the date that it was scheduled to be on because this way it would prevent anybody from asking, "Hey, can we change this date?" And we said, "No, the commission's already proved it, we can't change it." The only date that that's not gonna pertain to are the chamber because obviously they can change any, any event they've got. And I think the other one here is, is the-
EDC and the convention center.
But they can add an event without having to come to us, right?
Yeah, they can, well, matter of fact, they don't need our permission to do anything.
Okay. I was gonna say, because if not, that's very tedious for every time they're gonna host an event.
Right, now, the only time they'll need our permission is, is if they're asking to use one of our parks. And generally they ask for the city to be a sponsor for the park. And so that's when we can say, "No, you can't use it because we're having an event, same day, someplace else." So that, this will really help out for city events.
Well, I, I think that what we need, if, if we are going to have a calendar that sits, that lives on the city website and we are going to include the, the Chamber of Commerce and I think everybody else is, is city, the convention center, it seems like you're saying only the events that are sponsored because there's, there's some on there, they have a ton of events. And so does that mean all of their events are gonna be on the calendar?
No, so we did have a meeting with all of the internal city departments within the chamber and the EDC and the convention center and he basically just gave us just his main ones.
Main events?
Yeah, so it wasn't those other small events that they host within the convention center.
I think it's a great idea, I think we should include it. But what I, what I would like is for there to be, I don't want city staff to have to do it. I would like for the convention center, once a month, to send over to the events coordinator and say, "Hey, these are the events that I've got going on." The chamber also, I mean, they do a lot of great things, I don't mind putting all the, the mixers and things. So that way when somebody's coming to the city of Harlingen, what can we do? What event? It'd be nice to have that information.
So what we can do is modify this calendar to where it's only internal city department calendar so that way we make sure it's consistent and accurate. And then we can ask the chamber, the EDC and the convention center to monthly, to submit their monthly events to us, to the events coordinator. And she will be able to modify that on our website.
I think we need to add the events that we actually sponsor at the convention center, like the Burning Festival.
Yeah, yeah, we should.
The State of the City. I think those are the, the only two that are actually-
Marathon, yeah, we need to add those, yes, sir. Sorry, it became pretty lengthy.
I know.
Any other questions?
I guess so. I, I, it's an action item.
It is an action item. I would, I would recommend that we approve it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we should approve it and I completely agree with Commissioner Repeda's that if there's any events that we can combine, right? I leave that to staff to make that determination. Combine events so that we're not, you know-
So is that the first?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve.
Well, hold on, so are you gonna condition it? Because I, that was my concern, like, okay, now you've done this. No, now market days is at nine AM and the microchip is at, at this time or whatever and now we can't mess with it because it's already been-
Well, no, he said he would give us the authorization to change them.
That's what you're doing, you're conditioning it on that?
Yeah, if they need to change it to combine it, right? If it's gonna, we're gonna have a better animal shelter, microclip, microchip clinic at the same time as whatever downtown at sundown, we should just do it, right?
With Gabe's final?
But only one person's gonna be able to do that, right?
Yeah, we can-
Like coordinated, because you don't want like one department changing it. Everything goes to one person, the events coordinator.
For you to just approve it?
Yeah, I can, that works with, yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that motion as lengthy as it was.
I just don't wanna have to come back and do it again.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
May we go to N? Yeah. Do we have any, is this for people? Oh, yes, N. Okay, and then, sorry, Melinda, I'm gonna head it, I'm gonna give it back to you here in a minute.
That's okay.
We're gonna go now to ten N. Consideration and possible action to approve the evaluations committee ranking of firms and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for associated engineering services pursuant to the city's request for qualifications number twenty-two-five dash oh-one for professional engineering services for the design and environmental permitting for the Arroyo Colorado hike and bike trail extension project phase three. And Ana's gonna take this.
Ana, before you start, may I ask questions? How much is this study gonna cost?
The study?
More or less?
Yes, so the grant award was one hundred and seventy-six, let me see, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight. And so we have to cover twenty-one percent of that.
Twenty-one percent?
So-
So roughly thirty-five thousand?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just gonna talk.
Can I, let me, before you talk, because I know you've got a lot to say, so, but just so that way you understand a little bit of why, you know, we got all these rules and we can't talk and so this is the time to, to, to talk about it. I asked Ana to, and I asked Gabe to put this back on because one of the things was that at the last meeting, it was not presented that these funds were already obligated and the match has already been issued. And so not going forward with it would mean that we would lose that money. So, now you know.
I'd be happy to lose that money. This is, look, I'm a cheap guy and let me tell you, I never lose money on anything. But what this is, is an issue of government controlling people's lives and micromanaging people's lives. Government at best is inefficient and government at worst kills people. And what you all are proposing to do is seize land from twenty-two property owners. And Mr. Kemp, ninth grade civics, that's disgusting. I want you all to be greedy and think of the money that can be spent in your districts on your parks. I won my election, not by a big margin this time, but everyone in that area voted for me because they don't want to have people walking in their backyard even though it's down the hill because that allows access to their property. And that's threatening. We've had a dead person do the drug deals on the park, on the trail last year. I don't want this at all. I want freedom and individual property rights. And property rights in the Constitution are one of the things that makes this country a wonderful place to live. And so I'm asking for your support to defeat this and I'm asking for your support to be greedy and have money allocated to your districts for your parks. And don't invade people's properties. And last time I spoke in German, Russian, Italian and Polish, not to do it. Please, I beg you all, don't take people's land from them. I'm done.
No.
Ana? Yes, thank you. So, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is Ana Hernandez, I'm the Special Projects Director for the City of Harlingen and I'm here tonight to provide you with an overview of the work that has been completed for this planning project as well as presenting the risks of not continuing the project. The planning of the Arroyo Trail Extension, or what we refer to as Phase Three, was funded by a TASA grant that was awarded by the RGV MPO. TASA stands for Transportation Alternative Zer-Asai and it funds active transportation projects such as bike lanes, trails and sidewalk improvements. The city was given a hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight originally to complete this planning project. The purpose of this planning effort is to complete the design and preliminary, and preliminary engineering of the trail extension. So it's a planning, conceptual study, however you wanna call it, we're not constructing the trail at this point. And so in the application, we did not indicate- And so, in the application, we did not indicate a specific route, just the start and the endpoint, uh, of the trail. And so, the project limits are McKelvey Park, um, and it will connect to McColock Park and Hugh Ramsey for a total of one point one miles. The concept for this planning project can be traced back to several, uh, comprehensive and master plans, uh, adopted by the Harlingen City Commission. And those are listed here in this slide. I would like to point now that two of these plans establish a vision for a regional trail system connecting Harlingen with neighboring communities throughout Cameron County. So, I would like to point that out. So, the project is not only locally significant, but it's also regionally significant. This planning project, uh, encompasses two trails, uh, listed in the Trails Master Plan, which is the table that you see here. And they are the Arroyo Central and Arroyo East. And they are considered very high priority. So here's a timeline of the work that has been done by staff. Um, on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, the Texas Transportation Commission authorized this project to receive a TASA, uh, TASA funds. Two months later, the city received, uh, a notice of award from the RGV MPO. And on October nineteen, twenty twenty-two, the Harlingen City Commission authorized the execution of the grant agreement, or AFA. And I will be referred to, I'll be talking, um, I guess, referring to it as a FAA or grant agreement. It's the same thing. Uh, and this is the first time, on October nineteen, twenty twenty-two, that the city commission, uh, kinda heard about this project and staff formally requested authorization, uh, to enter into a grant agreement. So, we also, finally, on October thirtieth, which is a few days later, uh, the city entered into a, a grant agreement with, with Techstat, as well as issue a partial payment of the required, uh, state indirect costs. And so, that's the amount that has, that was paid to date at that point, four thousand eight hundred. So, moving over, uh, after executing a grant agreement, staff released RFQ twenty twenty-three eleven, uh, to procure professional services for the design of Phase Three. Uh, shortly after, on April eighteen, twenty twenty-three, the Harlingen City Commission authorized the city manager to begin negotiations with the highest ranking firm. And a month later, uh, the city issued a letter of intent to begin negotiations with the highest ranking firm. So up to this point, staff followed the city's standard procedure for procuring professional services. And so, however, uh, in October through December twenty twenty-three, Techstat reviewed the city's RFQ document and the procurement process. And, uh, city staff was actually notified that the steps followed did not meet Techstat's updated guidelines for TASA projects. And so, as a result, the TASA, or the, I'm sorry, the RFQ process had to be basically redone. Staff also had to update the city's procurement handbook, uh, for TASA projects to align with federal guidelines. So on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the new procurement handbook was approved by Techstat. And it was also later on, uh, approved by the city commission. On December sixteen, twenty twenty-four, um, I'm sorry, I skipped July sixteen. So, while this was unfolding, that we had to redo the procurement manual, um, the city was also notified by the MPO that available TASA funds had been, um, deobligated from another city. And so, that the city of Harlingen could benefit from those. So we received an additional thirty-five thousand dollars. And so, that's what brought the original grant amount to one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight. And that's the number that I gave you at the beginning of the presentation.
Mm-hmm.
On December sixteen, twenty twenty-four, the new RFQ was approved by Techstat and was reissued by the city. And so, this brings us to the last city commission meeting, when staff requested authorization to select the highest ranking firm and authorize negotiations. And the request was, you know, as you may know, it was denied. So, I recently had the opportunity to attend a grant training, uh, a few, a few weeks ago. And this quote actually showed up within the first ten minutes of that training. And it made me think about this project. And this is why I wanted to make sure that we, that I, that I've said this, you know, what I'm gonna cover in the next couple of slides, just to make sure that we, um, avoid some of the risks of breaking the contract. And so, there's this misconception that grants are free money without any strings attached. And so, that, that's just not the case. Uh, grants are like, are, are contracts. And like any contracts, there's ramifications if we decide to break them. So, if the city terminates the current grant agreement, the consequences, you know, can include immediate deobligation of funds, which affects the city's grant performance, as well as the RGV MPOs. This funding is not only lost by the city, but it could also be lost, you know, to the region. It might not be able to be reprogrammed for other projects.
So now, we're doing human sacrifices.
Let's, let's let her finish her presentation.
Yes, and so, there's also risk to future TASA funding opportunities. We currently have two grant applications that we submitted. They were approved at the Harlingen City Commission, uh, a few weeks ago. And so, in, that's a total of two point eight million that we potentially may be, uh, at risk of losing. Um, there's also this negative impact on grant reputation, uh, reducing competitive competitiveness for all grant applications in the immediate and the long-term role, long-term goal. There's also a higher indirect state cost for future projects due to increased risk assessment, which can happen, you know, we get the funds deobligated. And we can go from a low to a high risk in no time. So why should we continue this planning project? Uh, through this planning, uh, effort, the city aims to find the best alignment with minimal disruptions to neighbors and wildlife. The trail will be located entirely within the Arroyo Colorado floodway, like, like the other phases. Uh, it will fill a critical gap between McKelvey, McColock, and Hugh Ramsey, and they're all great parks. Encourage lifestyle, uh, active lifestyles and support the local economy by attracting ecotourism and active tourism. And it would advance Harlingen's long-term vision for active transportation. So staff, the staff recommendation, uh, overall, is to protect current and future funding opportunities, maintain Harlingen's credibility, and plan a community asset. Uh, staff is strongly recommending to continue the project to completion. So, thank you for your attention. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So if we, if we do this, okay? And they come back and they show us all these various different plans. And it stops at that point. What, what, what danger or forfeiture of anything is there?
So that would essentially complete the scope of work, or whatever work that we agreed to do. And that will be the end of the project.
There won't be any negative impact to the city at that point?
Yes.
So this specifically is to, there are all the concerns from the residents about erosion, taking property, um, you know, exercising eminent domain, all of those things. That's what we're going out to, to find out. And that's why, when it first came to the commission, we had this discussion. Uh, I was not a voting member at that time. I was a, a new mayor. And this commission, um, I think it was four to, four to one. Uh, and, and, and we gave direction to, to city staff to move forward with the project. And so, the only reason it came back was because of those new guidelines and the reviewing of, of the, of what they had presented, so that they'd have to go back. It's more of an amendment than, than an actual starting of a new, of a new project. And I will tell you, um, what Ana is saying is absolutely true. I sit on the RGV MPO. Gabe attends all of the meetings as well. And we had a.
I'm an alternate.
He's an alternate. And he goes a lot. And he's there even, even when I am there. Um, but, and, and, and Ana works very closely with the MPO. And Ana just was recognized at the COG for all of her hard work and, and is admired for all of her work. Um, but, this situation, similar situation happened in Brownsville. And Brownsville had to deobligate the funds reef, and, and the board went crazy. Why is it that you are accepting grant money and taking it away from another community if you're not gonna go forward with the project? And it was, I mean, and I, I think Mayor Cowan had just come on board. And he was like, I don't, you know, like, nobody wanted to take ownership of that. Because it does look bad. It, 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 it affects your reputation. You're, and then you're going back to the same entity and asking for money when you didn't use the money that they gave you. And so, that is, is problematic. And I, we, and then in your slides, there was a second payment already made. And so, I understand the, the concerns. Obviously, I'm here to serve all of Harlingen. But we cannot, uh, decide that we're not going to get the answers that we need to move forward because we're in fear of what might come out of this study. And having spoken to Ana, I think that it's gonna be very eye-opening, the information that we do receive, because of, of the distance and, and some other issues that we've, we've discussed. But this is not for construction. It's to make sure that you move forward responsibly. And that's why she was given the authorization previously. And what message are we sending to staff if one day we say yes, and then the next day we say no? I, I think it's important for us.
Well, I certainly appreciate the folks who live in Treasure Hills and their concerns. I mean, I have a fence in my backyard, so I can sit on my back porch and drink a beer and not see the people walking up and down the aisle, alley. But I also look at it, and I wish this had been presented at the last meeting. Uh, we got a lot of skin in the game here. If, if, just doing the study meets the needs to get the grant, it doesn't commit us to finalizing a project or anything like that, I can live with that. I know it's a very tough, I mean, I, I don't live in your district, Mike, but I got a lot of phone calls and emails from your folks since the last meeting. So, I mean, I realize that, but, uh, I think we, I think we could lose quite a bit here if we don't move forward and just complete the planning part.
Ana, question. How are we able to apply for a grant for land that we don't own?
Well, because the park itself, we do own. And technically, what we have done in the past, which is kind of the concept that we're following, is that we're asking for a license from the IPWC to kind of build this project.
And that's another question, right? So like, in Brownsville, the resacas, and I think in, in your district too, you have resacas behind the houses. I think it's like, the property owner owns, owes, owns the land to the, like, the middle of the resaca.
In some cases.
But they don't, but like, other government entities like can dredge it, and it's not a real ownership. Is that what we're looking at here?
I, I think it's a license. It's not necessarily an eastman situation. Because resacas, I think, some of some, there's some properties in Brownsville that they do own up all the way to the half of the resaca. But for most instances, when you review a plot, you ask for a maintenance eastman or a navigation eastman of some sort. So there's like some mechanism in, in place, like a, like an eastman, that you could do for the city to have access to the water. And in this case, technically, I mean, the Arroyo is, is, it belongs to the state, right? Uh, it's a state body of water. So, uh, we're actually building within the floodway. And the floodway technically is fifty feet, I guess, on both sides of the Arroyo. And so, again, the, we're not asking for an eastman, but we're asking for a license to actually build the trail. That's how it was done.
And some of these people own to the water and some own to the middle of the water?
And you see, I think that's kind of a point of discussion or contention. I don't think staff, I don't think gets in the opinion.
Well, of course, the IPWC owns everything that has a water in it in this country.
The water and fifty feet.
They, they have the rights.
Mm-hmm. It's the water and what's adjacent to it, fifty feet.
Like a right of way.
Yeah, and even more. So, um, I feel like that's, that's the point of doing the study. So, we could have easily asked for money to do the planning and do the construction, but we didn't do that because we knew this was an issue. I think from the past, um, I wasn't here for that, but I think that's one of the first things I heard, that there was opposition to the project, or may have, be some opposition in the future. And so, we decided to do the planning study, so we could actually evaluate all of those concerns. And that's, that's, to me, that's like the most careful approach that we could take for this project, since it seems to, you know, since it's controversial. So, um.
The end result will be the legal certainty of whether it is the property owner.
Exactly.
That owns the land and/or the IWBC, right? Like you said, it's the most cautious way.
Yeah.
I learned a lot from Ana, because at first, initially, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought. I said, well, and, and like you, um, I, well, one of the reasons why I'm sitting here is because of property, property rights, right?
Yeah.
And, and so, I, 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 I understand, you know, the Parkwood, um, residents and, and don't wanna infringe on what's, what's there. Uh, but after talking to staff, uh, to staff, um, you know, they may not, they may think that they own that, but they may not. We don't know. And then, the only way to find out is to do these types of feasibility studies. So I think it's the, the responsible way, uh, to move forward. And then, and then the other thing is, um, we wanna have that information because if we're gonna have gaps in the trail, we have a vision. This commission has a vision. I think it, I think we all share the same vision, is that we want to connect all our trails. We wanna connect our trails. We wanna make sure that there's green spaces from every home that, in, in the future. We're talking about fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years from now. We want anyone to be able to walk from their home to a green space. We want to make sure that people can shop and, 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 and move throughout the city, through the trails. And so, people that are on bikes or walking or off the streets, and they're not, you know, there's no issue. You see, we hear about all these fatalities. And in order to do that, this is a, not just a, a, a city issue. We are trying to do it through the county. And I know Javier and Ana work really hard to try to, you know, work with the region to make sure that, in that, in the future, that we have, um, that connectivity throughout the region. And we're even talking about Cameron and Hidalgo connecting. And so, this, are we gonna have a gap? And, and, and that gap is because this commission doesn't wanna get the answers? You know, we, we need to, if we're going to say we're not gonna connect, then we need to have evidence to suggest that we shouldn't do it. And this is, this is the way to get that done.
So, once the study is complete, then something similar to what Rennie's gonna be doing on this park issue out there, that a lot of people, for and against, a similar type thing could be done to give these residents an opportunity to air their concerns, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Mike Canacho, gather the, the folks out there to come in and make their hitch for it.
We, we invite, we, 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 we had a meeting just with them also, do you remember?
That was, I think, year.
You were here, I think. Or I don't know if you were here. But we, we, we invited them just to kind of have some, just open discussion. They had a lot to say. And that's why I know that, that, you know, there was, there was a lot of opposition. Uh, but, you know, if we're gonna be forward-thinking and we, you know, we wanna look towards, um, making that connectivity throughout the, throughout the city and throughout the region. And we wanna make sure that we're doing it, but we're doing it responsibly, and we've got all the answers that we, that we need. And we're not equipped to do that at this point, but.
What's the projected length accomplishes?
Uh, technically, we have twelve months to complete it. Twelve months to complete it.
Excuse me, Ana. Will, uh, this study address trespassing issues?
Uh, trespassing, um, the, the overall goal is to get schematics, let's say, for a trail alignment, or like how the trail is gonna run around that area, assuming that we do have, we're not encroaching on anyone and that we have the space or we have the permission to do that. And so, we can propose like fencing and landscaping to protect people's neighborhoods. Is that what you mean by trespassing?
Yes, because this hasn't happened in this area that we're looking at, we're considering. It has happened on the Rangerville side, where the Arroyo's at, okay? There's been complaints on that one. There's been police reports. That's what I've been told, okay? So, I understand his point. I understand the fact that I personally don't wanna take a chance on losing out on potential grants in the future, okay? I know that. We need plenty. And I just brought it up earlier, at the beginning, at the outset. We need a comprehensive study on that traffic congestion, all right? We need to find ways to get that situation. We need to serious look into that. We have other issues that are more pressing, okay? But I do not wanna lose any funding. And, and everybody, every property owner along this Arroyo doesn't want people in the backyard snooping around and taking whatever the heck they want to. So we need to protect the property owners, and we need to make sure that we don't lose funding. So I, I'm in a real situation here.
Chief, um, sorry to put you on the spot, but can you come up to the podium?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the first time that I hear of issues at Rangerville and people calling the police in regards to issues on the Arroyo. Is, is this a, something common?
No, I, I, we'd have to research it unless there, you know, uh, random calls here and there. But that we have a problem, I don't, I haven't seen a problem.
Yeah, and in the near, almost three years that I've been here, I haven't heard a single issue. I did hear about what you mentioned and the drug use and, um, and, and I think I talked to you about that. And, but, um, but this isn't something that, this isn't a.
No, we'd be addressing it. I think if we had a problem, we'd be addressing it. Probably sending units. We do send units every now and then. As a matter of fact, my wife and I were eating, uh, at a restaurant next to the Arroyo. And there was a unit going by last night, so.
Where?
The Arroyo Trail.
Oh, like McKelvey or?
Yeah, well, McKelvey, yeah, McKelvey.
Not, but, but specifically Rangerville, that there had been any.
Yeah, we'd have to research. We can, we can run some reports and find out what, how many calls have been made.
I'd love to see.
For that area. Mm-hmm, we can do that.
Sounds good.
Please do.
Sounds good.
Please do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Javier, did you want to say something? You stood up, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just going to respond to Commissioner Nopes on the, on how we would get the, how we would get the approval to be able to build it in the arroyo within the floodway, right? So, we've kind of set precedence, right, with the first phase, the second phase, and then now this one, right? So, we'd go back to IBWC to request permission to be able to build the trail in there.
Yeah, because like, if you think about it, the other portion, the original portion from McKelvie to Bogus, or Sam's Ford now, you do go by your neighborhood. I forget the neighborhood name, the one that has the little park at the end. Right there, on the backside of Taft.
CB Wood?
CB Wood.
CB Wood, thank you. The CB Wood, because they would have the same argument, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be the novel issue, but it'd be interesting for us to know how it works.
Yeah, I don't do this type of...
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Anna? You're amazing, Anna. We appreciate all of your hard work.
Amen.
This is a very good presentation. I think it gave us, answered all of our questions. If there's no other...
Motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Anna. All right, I am going to have the meeting over. Do I have any? I was going to, is there anyone, do we have to move anything else up? No? Okay, so then I think we're back at Robert giving his investment. Oh, no.
Sandy.
Sandy and Robert. Now, we can always save those for the next meeting if you'd like. So, we can move on.
That'd be nice.
We want to take care of the golfers since they're...
That's why I was saying, we have other people here. They're looking at me like, yes? Okay, so, yes, let's move. Can you give me the item number? H, H, 10H.
10H.
I thought y'all just wanted to be here to hang out. 10H, consideration and possible action to approve a request to convert one part-time position for a pro shop cashier into a full-time position and create three part-time positions to meet operational needs and enhance customer service. Jeff?
Tim, oh, sorry, Jeff. You brought it out the gate. Tim made that point. Sorry, I was thinking about you, Tim. What was your original request for?
Originally, we had to put in the budget for eight part-time positions.
Right, one full-time and eight part-time?
No, eight part-time.
Just only eight part-time? Okay. Thank you.
That was in the budget.
It was in the budget?
Last April.
No, it was not in the budget.
It was in the budget last April.
He submitted his request, but it wasn't approved until the final...
No, it wasn't approved, but there was like 88 positions, I think, that were asked for.
Okay, so, let me just make sure I got this understand, because I've been talking to a lot of your board members, and so, there is this assumption that all of these are in the budget, so they are not in the budget.
No, they were asked for and denied.
Okay, so, budgeted amount, is this here?
No, this is, we're going to...
This is an amendment to the budget.
This is an amendment to the budget, yes.
So, what was budgeted for was given?
Yes, what he asked for, actually, what he asks now is what we budgeted.
That's what I thought, because I was like, how do you have more in your budget than just go hire them is what, in my mind. So, you have used your budget.
No, there's money enough. There's a little bit over in the budget, so we have enough to pay for these people in the current budget. I may have to move some from part-time from one department to the other, which is the pro shop department to the snack bar department, but there's still enough money to cover the pay for them.
The eight people?
No, the four people here.
Yeah, he's made sufficient revenue to actually pay for these, and we would, whenever I spoke to Jeff about adding more people, it had always been this number here. Actually, it's been two part-timers and converting to full-time. But I think the board approved more. We just didn't have, I hadn't checked the budget to see if we can cover all that right now, and that's not what Robert and I talked about when we looked at, looking at this request. So, he had enough to cover this, so he can go back and look at what he's got planned for the future to see if we can cover any more, but I think, yeah.
That's what we decided. We'd go back and look at it in the future for any other...
But I do have a question, though. Tim mentioned that you're having trouble going to buy more hot dog buns when you're out. What exactly is happening that you can't go out and get them?
No, we have the money and the budget to go buy the hot dog buns. We're running out of, no, we don't run out of hot dog buns. Occasionally, the hot dogs have been out because they're out at Sam's, and we carry the same hot dogs, so we are doing that. I bought a new freezer so that we can now store more items since we're selling more items. That's helping. We're not really running out of things right now. That's something that happened in the past.
Admin doesn't approve where you go to Sam's.
No, no.
We don't approve any of that. You go on your own, and so, when he said that, I wasn't sure what he was talking about.
Yeah, I had, a few people had brought that to my attention, and I wanted to fix that if that was an issue.
No, we have the money and the budget to go to get that stuff. I have to go to Sam's. It's relying on what they have at the time when I go. We can't get eggs right now. I have some eggs, because I got some, but it's hard to get some of the product that we get.
Nobody can get eggs right now.
No.
So, when, okay, because I want to, I just want to be clear, when the snack bar closes, it's because you haven't gone shopping, not because you don't have authorization to shop, or because there's nothing to buy?
No, there's stuff to buy as long as we have hamburger, hot dogs. If they're out, then we don't have those things at the time. Hot wings, we don't have sometimes, but I have the budget to go get the stuff. When the snack bar closes, it's because we don't have the staff to put in there, because I don't have anybody to put in there.
Okay, so, so...
That's when it closes.
You don't need any authorization to shop? You can do that on your own? You've got it in the budget? You just need somebody, so the only, the reason why it closes is not because you run out of food, it's because you don't have somebody to man the snack shop?
Correct.
And that is going to be covered with this?
Some of it, yes.
Where are you going to put the three part-timers?
Three part-timers are supposed to be on the beverage cart.
All three of them?
They were, yes.
Not at the same time, I would imagine, but...
No, no, but we're going to, they were going to divide up. We're open seven days a week, and so, we needed some...
Can you work it so that some of them are helping you in the restaurant?
They weren't, they were not planned to at this time.
But, see, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, if you have somebody out there in the, selling beer, and they're being productive, because I would imagine that the only time you bring these people onboard is when you have, all the tee times are filled.
Correct. We wouldn't use them on a day like today.
So, if they're out there selling beer and making revenues, they cannot be working the kitchen.
Right.
And that's why he's asking for three, three persons doing the beer runs.
Right.
Correct?
Three to cover the seven days, so that we're running, I mean, it's rare that we have days like this where it's really cold, but we'd have three people so that there, we have somebody working a shift, you know, and covering it from opening till around three or four every day, seven days a week.
Since we're bringing this up, I have a question for you, Gabe. Why doesn't the golf course have a Cisco or Benny Keith or a grocery company that comes in and provides them with the meals?
Well, we've looked at doing that.
What?
We've looked at doing that. And Cisco, as we've set them up as a vendor, they keep changing the salesman.
They keep what?
Changing the salesman.
The salesperson keeps changing.
Salesperson changes all the time. But we've looked at doing that, but it does cost more. I'm going to Sam's several times a week now to get the food guy to go pick it up.
When did you get your freezer?
Got it at Sam's.
No, but when?
Probably right around when we opened, around November.
Okay, so you can actually buy more now and then just stock it up?
Yes, I can buy more now. It's a small area. We had a very small freezer. This is another small freezer, but it's greatly helped us now. We got stock, where I've got, you know, 12 or 13 packages of hot dog in there now, versus what we used to have with three or four at home.
So, Jeff, I was wondering, and I, I don't know, I talked to, I'm not sure who I talked to on the board about it, and I mentioned to Gabe, and I think that this has been a topic of conversation at the board, with your board. What about entertaining leasing out the space, so that way you have somebody that pays you for, to run the concession for like a year to see the success?
We discussed that. I don't, would you give them the beer sales? Because that's a huge...
No, I think that it would be just the...
Because they're going to want the beer sales, I promise you.
Well, I don't know. That's why I'm saying, if you have someone, because I know that I've gotten, I had gotten an email about a year ago, maybe I told you that somebody was looking to, you know, potentially open up, like, they wanted to do like a restaurant like the Country Club when they heard about all the renovations that were happening at the golf course. And so, maybe, so that way you don't have to expend any funds and you actually make money, you know, a consistent amount, and you rent out the space, and conditioned upon, hey, you need to be open this, you know, on these hours, and you're just selling food, and you need to operate, you know, from this time to this time, and then kind of monitoring to see how busy they are, and then you could utilize the staff that you have to sell beer and, you know, anything else that you need. And then if you see that it is, it takes off and that it's super consistent, that they're making, you know, I think it's pretty easy to determine whether they're making money or not based on just the pure presence of people buying, then, then I think then you'd have, okay, well, look, we've seen this all year, and it'd be something that is best to absorb, and there's revenue. Because I don't know, honestly, with the cost of, especially like breakfast tacos right now, I don't know if you're going to make a profit on that or not, or if it's more of just a service.
It's both, but we make a lot of money on hot dogs and hamburgers, and...
Like, what would you say if you, like, how, what is a lot of money in terms, like, a month, on a monthly basis, what would be the revenue for the sales?
Let's see, make sure, I've got it, I've got it right, I just can't hardly see it. Beverages for this year, this fiscal year...
Not the beer?
Well, the beverages, $6,000, but that's also cokes and sodas and stuff, which they're going to want that, too.
It's $6,000?
$6,000.
For the year?
For the fiscal year, which is October 1 until yesterday. And then the food is $2,188.
That's your expense or your revenue?
That's the revenue, not the expense.
So, that's not a lot of revenue?
No, it's not a huge amount.
So, imagine if you renting out the space...
If you could find somebody that wanted to do that, and it's, I don't know, they're going to, it's going to be tough for them to make it.
Mm-hmm.
Because these three days right here, they're not going to be making anything.
That's exactly, he's absolutely correct.
What?
Money's in the beer. They don't care about selling...
Yeah, they're going to want the beer.
So, who's the chair now of the board?
Charlie.
Charlie?
But if the beer, we're opening at 7 o'clock in the morning until, in the...
Holy smokes, they're drinking beer at 7:00 in the morning?
Yes, we do have people, yes. And all the way in the summer, 8:30, 8:30 at night, and we're going to have to have, that's, we've got to be able to sell the drinks on that time. The restaurant's not going to want to do that, so we're going to have to have somebody that comes in and wants to run the restaurant from like 7:00 in the morning until 2:00 or 3:00 or something like that, and then we, then we can handle all the snacks and drinks. But if they wanted to do a real restaurant, that's my thinking, where they cook actual restaurant food.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm just thinking, $8,000 a year is really not a lot of revenue for the year.
We don't have a stove.
We're not in the hot month so yet either. I mean, I'm sure that jacks up for me.
We don't have a stove, and our grill's electric, which you can't put any more than four or five hamburgers on it, or it lowers the temperature and won't cook them. So, that would have to be, they're going to have to replace that.
It's going to have to be a whole kitchen renovation to get you up and running for full, and it's tiny.
There is no snow.
You and I cannot be back-to-back in there.
No.
So, what are you selling? Hot dogs and tacos?
Hot dogs, tacos, and hamburgers. And we've done, like, we had a tournament Friday, the engineer tournament, the evening was cold, and we cooked 59 hamburgers for them. And we've, we catered for our opening tour tournament, we cooked the hamburgers for that, too. So, those are some things that we were doing on terms. We're offering the catering ability, where we can cook hamburgers, chips, and a drink for the people. Charge $8.50 per, per package.
$8.50 for a burger and chips and a drink?
And a fountain drink.
Super cheap.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's probably why you're not making any money. Just saying. I mean, it's like $13 at Waterbury.
Circling back to the agenda item, right? Three in one.
Yes.
You're happy with that? You think we can, because obviously, we need to have the personnel out there to sell the beer. This gives you the flexibility you need to operate.
In the future, we need to move...
We're going to have to go back and look at it to see if we can cover the others out of his budget. If not, we have to find a way maybe to pay for it out of the general fund, but...
So, we're going to have to cover this three for one?
No, no. He can pay for this.
That's what I thought.
This is covered today.
Yes.
We're going to have to go back and look at it.
But he still wants us to look at the others to see how we can make it work.
And one of the deals was a full-time cook, so that we could have a cook from 7:00 in the morning instead of having one person there that's trying to get people the beer and drinks and then go trying to cook at the same time, and that's not working very well.
Every time I talk to him, this deal changes, so...
So, I'm just, you know, Tim, you're a businessman. You've got the business hat on, and you hop on up here, buddy. So, so, so we've got, if you have a potential of making $6,000 a year in revenue and you want to get a full-time cook that's going to cost you 30 grand...
Not a year, not a year.
It's a quarter.
Fiscal year, this is in the last...
Okay, I was like, what are you...
No, 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 no.
Just sent off.
These are, these are the numbers that we are currently at.
Current, got it, got it, okay.
It's $6,787.
Okay, I thought you said last fiscal year.
No, 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 it's this current fiscal year.
When do we open?
And the cook is only part-time.
No, full-time.
No, he wants a full-time.
I was a cook. The cook...
You just said that.
A full-time cook can work seven to two or three.
That's what happens to me, Tim. That's what happens to me, Tim. Every time I talk to him, the deal changes, so I, I don't know.
Whatever y'all will give me.
So, so, you know, let's just take a few minutes because I know this is, this is important and, and, and I know that the board really wants, and does the commission, I mean, we, $5.5 million is a lot of money. We want the golf course to be successful. One of the directives that we gave Gabe was not to give the golf course any more money because we had, we had given so much and we wanted the golf course to be successful, but at the same time, we can't break the bank, right? But having, you know, reflecting on that, I think this commission was, gave different guidance when we said, okay, let's do right, because we can't, we can't have a state-of-the-art golf course with crappy golf carts, right? And so that was important, so we made that. And so we want to give you what you need, we wanna give you the resources, but we really need to know what it is that you need and that is from Jeff and from the board, so that way we just, now we know. In order to be successful, if it's eight positions, but those are not budgeted, we've got four or four part-time that are within the budget, how many, how much more so that way, that, that the golf course is good? Because now we learned today, because I didn't know, but we learned that you can go buy whatever you need. You don't need any authorization, which is super important because we don't wanna be micromanaging any of that. We want you to be, you know, independent and be able to make those decisions on your own. But what's it gonna, what's it gonna take? How many positions?
I know it's like, but let me, let me just give you our numbers quick. This, this fiscal year compared to two years ago when we had all 27 holes open. This year fiscal year since October 1 to yesterday, we've done 14,219 green fees and players. And two years ago, we did 10,285. So we have a positive 3,934 people in 89 days. We've also on revenues, we are over the revenues we had that year by $102,872.50.
100,000?
102,000. So we're.
Lead with that next time, Jeff.
We're way over. We are, we've got standing lines constantly at the golf course. We, we're, the people are coming, we're, we're busy as we can be. It's, you know, we're averaging over 100 players a day.
Can I suggest something? Right now, we know we can cover this. It's not gonna impact the budget. Can I suggest that we approve this and then Robert and I need to get together. At the next meeting, we'll come back with some more information about what we can afford to get him to where he needs to be.
Absolutely, but I want something in writing from you to the commission with ample time, exactly what you want and that that is going to fill the need. And so you've got a bunch of, you know, good guys on your board. Brainstorm and, 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 and what is it that you, not, not the dream, dream list, but what is it that you need to be successful?
Okay.
What, what that looks like?
I will get with the advisory board, we'll set that up, then I'll just speak to the city manager and Oscar and Robert, then we'll bring that to y'all.
That sounds awesome.
And, and just to wrap up, since we're talking about next steps after this, and, and you might have mentioned when somebody asked if you were happy with this, the answer is no. We definitely, we absolutely want this approved. The next steps are to remediate the problem that I see, that the board sees, that puts us in this position where Jeff has to go to Gabe for everything. They shouldn't be on Gabe's desk.
He doesn't come to me.
If we're going to, if we're going to make best use and highest use of this investment, the golf course has gotta be able to run itself as a business.
How? How, Jim?
By giving Jeff the ability and the authority to make these, to make personnel decisions for it, for it to act, for him to run the business as a business should be run without having to run through personnel issues with the city manager's office. And, and we appreciate Mr. Gonzalez's support. This is not set up anymore for success. Back when the course was losing a lot of money, the city needed to take it over. We're not there now, the numbers bear that out. And we can't have the golf course and its management and its finances subject to other budgets, other issues going on in the city. This is a, this is a, an entertainment and recreation business that's open seven days a week into which we pumped in a whole lot of money. And we've got a starter who can't go out and enforce rules on the course because he's gotta stay on the star, on the first tee. Things like that that keep us unable to maintain the course long-term and maintain it short-term to make sure rules are followed and things like that. Jeff needs to be, I, I keep repeating it and I'm kinda beating a dead horse with it, I feel like, but it's not a city department. It's a, it's, it's a business, it's gotta be run for profit. And one of the other things I brought up in my email to some of you guys is the issue of the loan and the interest being paid. There might be some discrepancy on whether interest is being charged, my understanding is it is. And if, if decisions are being made by anybody in the city administration that makes it harder for Jeff to make money and thereby makes it more difficult to pay that loan, that increases the interest that the golf course is gonna have to pay the city. And that's a legally tenuous situation. We might wanna talk to Mr. Stasi about that.
Jim, what loan are you talking about?
I'm, I'm, I, I, I'm, I'm not citing a particular law, I'm saying that.
No, no, the loan.
Oh, loan?
There's a loan, Robert can address that, there's over a million dollar loan. We're getting charged $5,000 a year on the interest.
We know about this, right? Like, this is common knowledge?
It's a deficit of every year they lose money.
Right, but that's.
But they're not paying it back, that's it.
You're not paying it back and we're not charging you interest on that.
So when we do the, when, when we do the interest allocation, if we don't do that, none of the other funds or none of the other things make any money because it's in a, in a deficit. So it's gotta be allocated that way.
Yeah, but they don't pay us anything.
That's a journal entry.
Yeah.
Journal entry, yes.
They don't pay us cash or money.
Is that a cash transaction? It's a journal transaction.
It was in the book. So, look, like I said, that's an issue for discussion to hash out. And, and, and that's what I mentioned, that's why I copied them on the email. We need to figure that part out.
The, the other thing, Jim, is whether the marshal stays on the first tee or not, that's his decision, not anybody else's.
Not if he doesn't have the ability to hire somebody to do the job that needs to be done.
Okay, well, that's a different issue.
That becomes y'all's decision ultimately, and that's the problem. It should be his decision. And as long as it's not his decision, we're on the road to burning five and a half million dollars on fire. So we urge you to approve this and we urge y'all to have a meeting with us, you know, not just to look around the course, but our commission and the city commission to, to hash out these issues. Because the circumstances that exist now aren't the ones that existed when the city took over the golf course. The golf course needs to be able to stand on its own and thrive.
So I make a motion of proof, if it hadn't been done yet.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed? So, in writing, guys.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Robert and Sandy, we're gonna push your presentation back to the next city council meeting.
We love you, but we're, we'll see you next time.
All right, guys, let's do this rocket docket.
Yes. So we are now. Yeah, let me go ahead and do these, Melinda, some of the dummies anyway. We're gonna pass on that, right? Okay, so public hearings at this time, we have nine, a, public hearing for rezoning requests for not designated district to light industry district for 12.45 acres of land out of block 68, Palm Metal Company subdivision located along the north side of FM 106, approximately 1,295 feet east of FM 509. This applicant is Chris Hamby. And at this time, we'll open the public hearing, having no one here to speak for or against this public hearing. We'll close at this time. Item 9B, public hearing for an SUP to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at 712 North 77 Sunshine Strip, Suite 34, bearing a legal description of lots 1 and 2, north part of Lot 3, Coronado Acres, subdivision 3. Applicant is Carlos Escibell. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on this item, having no one here to speak for or against. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Moving on to item 10 and action items. 10A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for rezoning requests from not designated district to light industry district for 12.45 acres of land out of block 68, Palm Metal Company subdivision located along the north side of FM 106, approximately 1,295 feet east of FM 509. Mark, can you read the caption?
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Harlingen, rezoning from not designated in district to light industry, LI district for 12.45 acres of land out of block 68, Palm Metal Company subdivision located along the north side of FM 106, approximately 1,295 feet east of FM 509.
All right, we all have our pockets. Is there any questions?
No, ma'am. Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for an SUP to allow a bar lounge in general retail district at 712 North 77 Sunshine Strip, Suite 34, bearing illegal descriptions of lots 1 and 2 in north part of Lot 3, Coronado Acres subdivision. Is there any questions or discussion?
I have one question. Is this, because I, the little section where it's at, this is where Classics was?
Correct.
So Classics doesn't exist anymore?
Classics is still there, this is gonna be an additional.
Oh, an additional one. Okay, okay. That's all I wasn't sure about, okay. That's all the only question.
Do you realize that it's gonna be a very small place, correct?
Correct, yes.
In my concern, like it was the other day, at the planning and zoning?
Yes.
Hopefully, hopefully this gentleman understands that ADA is gonna have a lot of influence as to what he does in there.
Correct. He has spoken to our deputy building official, they have explained the process to him, he is fully aware. So if it does get approved, he does understand he needs to bring in his building permits and comply with everything that they're requiring, all the codes.
Mark, can you read the caption?
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the city of Harlingen to issue a special use permit SUP to Carlos Escibell to allow a bar lounge in a general retail district located at 712 North 77 Sunshine Strip, Suite 34, bearing a legal description of lots 1 and 2 in north part of Lot 3, Coronado Acres subdivision 3.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending the city of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2025.
An ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the city of Harlingen, Texas for fiscal year October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance and or gaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion approved.
I had a question.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I had a question, I was looking, I don't have my notes with me because I left them in my, oh anyways. I had a question on, I was looking at the stuff, the municipal court, we got her a car?
Yes.
Is that standard practice?
Yeah, like, does she use that often or how does that work?
She, right, she uses that every day. Yeah, she takes it with her to Brazil and comes back. And then on the weekends when we have to have magistration, she'll have to drive down, so that's why we got her that.
Okay, so is she still getting, but I don't know about how like, is she getting the, what's her car?
She never got a car loan.
Okay, I'm good then.
The next question I have, unless somebody else has something. Why are we getting, do we really get 11,000 from TXU as far as revenues? Rebate check?
Yes, we do get a check. They'll send us a check every now and then when they have what they call like a blackout period, they'll ask you to either turn off some of your devices, reduce consumption. And then after the month, they'll look at how much you saved and then they'll send you a rebate check.
I just wonder how much they're making off of us and they're saying, here's a token. That's it for me.
Did you have a question?
Any other questions?
Nope.
Because we already bought the car for the judge, right?
Yes.
Uh, make a motion of proof.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Gabe, if we can put on that agenda item for the lawnmower, the tractor and all that for code enforcement, our next agenda, please.
Tractor, okay, that'll be the second meeting in March?
As soon as possible.
Yeah, that, that's, actually, the second meeting in March will be our first one because we're.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, we've already done D and P, item.
Jeff, is he with his family?
Oh, um, I'm sorry. That's the correct mayor, it's item number, yeah, I, no, K, L, L.
Oh, sorry, chief, you're waiting here for this.
That's what I was like.
And your lovely wife, I'm sorry, Karina. Item, L, consideration and possible action to appoint Alfredo Alviad as interim chief of police for the Harlingen Police Department effective February 11, 2025 due to Chief Michael Custer's retirement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You didn't have to be here for that, you're, but thank you and, and. Congratulations. This has been a formality, but Chief Alviad has been our chief and has been very active since the day that, even before the celebration at, at the PD. So we appreciate you and all that you do and everything that you, all the, what is it, two decades of, more than two decades of service to the Harlingen PD, so PD is in good, in good hands.
Mayor, I think he was looking for some sort of formal event, so maybe we can just take a picture with the commission.
Let's do that.
And Freddie and his family, I think that would be a good thing for him.
Thanks. Nobody could've told me would've done this first.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, he wanted something a little different.
Why are you doing the work, homie? Not that great. Any other phone requests? Hey, will it get the stuff that's right here too? No, it has to only be in this part.
Josh, you better make sure you take several pictures because.
One, two, three.
I'm gonna take a couple. Wait, when he's done?
One more. One, two, three.
I'm gonna go in here too, because I don't know if they get everything. Does it get this part right here? Okay. I don't know if this is fun, okay, ready? One, two, three. Okay.
Are you hungry, brother?
I didn't have breakfast or lunch.
You never eat in here, maybe snack on something.
Yeah, tell me next time, Kim.
Mayor, I totally forgot.
Oh, my goodness.
I didn't know what that means. I didn't know that was her. Officer, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's like, what are we doing? All right, moving on to item F, consideration and possible action to approve a request from, okay, we're, we're back in session. All right, consideration and possible action to approve a request from Richard Odeba, owner of Richard's Mexican restaurant to repair damages sustained to the parking lot located at 1116 South Commerce Street in Harlingen, Texas, 78550, caused by the city's refused units while servicing the garbage containers. Total estimated cost is $6,558.72, which includes cost of repairs, equipment, materials and labor. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Christopher Torres, Public Works Director for the record. The reason we're bringing this to you is because Mr. Odeba reached out to our department with a request of us repairing his driveway all the way towards the back. And the reason we're bringing it here is because Public Works does not do any, any work on private property. And so it would be up to you all, if you all decide that, that Public Works can take on these repairs.
So was, did Public Works cause the damage?
I can't, I can't say that for certain, Mayor. You know, our trucks do go to the back, but I, I can't say for certain that our trucks damaged his, his driveway.
We, we, we don't know for sure, Mayor, but he says that he saw one of our trucks run over the, the side of, of the curb that, I think it's outside is, is, it's.
In, in, in the rear of his restaurant, there's a, there's a door with an island, which is right next to his grease trap.
The grease trap, there you go.
Yes. And so Mr. Odeba did say that we ran over that island and so that's, that's.
Yeah, so we don't know and so we, we figured we'd bring it to the commission because.
Did you talk to your drivers, possibly?
We did, Commissioner, yes.
And what did they say?
Well, you know, our, our drivers, they, they, they are taught, right, not to go any, over any islands, not to go onto private property, except for instance, right, whenever we service a residential container, we go onto the curb. If we see the container onto the property, we don't service it and we leave it behind. We take a picture and, and so they, they are educated on that, they're, they're taught not to do that and they're, they're also trained, right? And so our drivers, you know, they, they, they mentioned that they did not run over that, that island.
Did he report it that day or was it?
No, so what happened is that he, he did make a call to our department for us to repair a curb right by the entrance of his restaurant. We went out there, we assessed damages and, and so that is part of the scope that Public Works does do repairs on, right? Which is curb. And we did make the repairs to the curb. After we were done on that, he did say.
Chris, that, that part was in the right of way, so that's why we fixed it, yeah.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, so, so like I said, that is part of the scope that we do, do repairs on. Once we were done with that, he did make a call to our department asking, or alleging, right, that, that we had done the damages to his driveway and to the back of the restaurant. So just, just so you know, when you drive into his restaurant, it is concrete and then there's a section about maybe 15 or 20 feet, if I'm not mistaken, that is asphalt. And then it continues on to concrete, right? So there are sections there that have some damage, some cracks. And so that, that is what he's asking us to do the repairs on.
It's just, just the, just that section that's next to the grease trap. Because that, if that collapses, he says it'll go into the grease trap and then Water Works will actually-
Okay. He, he did communicate to our department, right? He did say that he wanted the whole thing. And that's why we did this, this cost analysis to present to y'all. But if, if he did have a conversation, a different conversation, just mentioned that, that, that is up to y'all, of course.
Is it, did the drivers have any kind of cameras or anything?
We do. We do have cameras.
So, did you review the footage?
So, you know, we, we service his restaurant, I believe it's three days a week. The video only holds it, holds it for 15 days. Other than that, it stays in the cloud. But, you know, to go and review all that video, it would be somewhat, you know, time-consuming. But we did review some of the, some of the footage, but we don't know when that damage was done. He's expressing that this is, this is something that we did, but we don't know a date. It could have happened three weeks ago, it could have happened two days ago.
Yeah, because we don't know.
He didn't specify a time, a date?
No, he just said that, that, that we did it. And he actually said that he saw one of our trucks go over it. What I could, what I'd like to recommend is that we table this and just let us look at that section of the curb and gutter that he said he wanted us to repair and just focus on that. Because it's going to be a lot, it's going to be under a thousand.
Right. Yeah. If, if it's just that island with that curb, yeah, it'll be under a thousand.
I make a motion to table. Second.
Yeah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And for the record, Daniel Lopez abstains from this item. Moving on.
Why is that? Why?
I talked to-
Based on a conversation he and I had regarding conflicts of interest.
With Richard? Or this other item?
With Commissioner Lopez.
Well, given that he, he consulted with counsel, I think we'll just move on. Item G, consideration and possible action to authorize the filing of an application for financial assistance with the Texas Water Development Board for funding the design and construction of priority wastewater capital improvement projects. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Perez, second by Lopez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We've already done H. I, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application to the Loews 100 hometown program.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. J.
Just a sec. Did we miss the deadline on this one?
I, I actually asked her, she asked if she could submit it yesterday because the deadline was five o'clock yesterday.
Okay.
So.
We're fine, thank you.
J, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application to the Loews 100 hometown program.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. J.
Just a sec. Did we miss the deadline on this one?
I, I actually asked her, she asked if she could submit it yesterday because the deadline was five o'clock yesterday.
Okay.
So.
We're fine, thank you.
J, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit multiple grant applications for flood mitigation and secondary power source projects to the Texas Division of Emergency Management under the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Brick Grant Program.
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Excuse me, what, what are the projects? They were in the pack?
Did you read the, we have a motion and we had a second already, so.
It's also right here, Exhibit A. They gave us a printout right here.
Last minute, thank you.
Okay, so.
Go to the second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution nominating VHS Harlingen Hospital Company LLC for designation as a qualified business and enterprise project under the Texas Enterprise Zone Program under the Texas Enterprise Zone Act.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, consideration and possible, we did this, M, consideration and possible action to cancel the city commission meeting of March 5th, 2025. I asked Gabe to put this on here because we have Harlingen Day at the Capitol. On that day, we won't have a quorum. And so that's why. But I do think that we should look to see if we have any business that we need to take care of before the second scheduled meeting. And if so, then we can schedule a meeting at that time. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we did N already. And moving on to board appointments. I'll start with you, Ford.
None.
Daniel?
Yes, Frank Lozano for the Parks, Parks Advisory Board, replacing Leandra Villarreal.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Daniel, reading?
Yes, I'm going to appoint Jessica B. Gonzalez to the Harlingen Water Works. You do them one at a time, right? Okay. Jessica B. Gonzalez to the Harlingen Water Works Board.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'm also going to add David Hall to the Golf Advisory Board.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have to, that's, it's just an open appointment?
Well, no. Well, Jim was on it, but then we had talked about it and he was going to-
And actually, I, I want to make this comment because there were people probably outside of this room, they're going to assume some things. And especially since I took a stand on, on that one issue. Commissioner Perez-
Come to the microphone, Dave.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Perez is desiring to bring more people into board service and he wants all of his appointees to serve on one board at a time. He's appointed me both to community development and golf. He asked me to choose. I was appointed, I was elected chairman of the Community Development Board, so I chose golf board. I only say this because I don't want anybody thinking that the Commissioner Perez has kicked me off the golf board because of anything I said earlier or about my attempts to free the golf course of yada, yada, yada. So I don't want anybody saying any kind of-
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We, we know that-
It's because you're an Astros fan, that's why you're on.
It's, it's all good. I appreciated the appointment and the opportunity to-
And you're doing an amazing job over with Sandy. We appreciate all your, your hard work. And we know you're going to be still around with these guys, so we're, we're good. I just, but so that way that the motion is correct, you need to remove and-
Okay.
That was the purpose.
Okay, I make a motion to remove Jimmy Young from the Golf Advisory Board.
And?
And replace him with David Hall.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And item 12, executive session. 12A, deliberation pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074 to consider personnel matters, i.e. the regular annual evaluation of the city manager, and B, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property to discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the city of Harlingen has received from business prospect that the government body seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city and with the city is conducting the economic development negotiations related to the following projects, Project Dixie Land and Project H2. Is there a motion to go to executive session?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The time is now 10:30, 10:26 PM, and we will retire to executive session. And we'll take the EDC item first. You, can you read it?
Item 13, action on executive-
The time is now 11:36 PM, and we are back in open session. Melinda?
Action on executive session items. The city commission will reconvene in open session and may take action on any item listed in the executive session section of this agenda. Item 13A, consideration and possible action on item 12A as discussed in executive session.
Make a motion to proceed as discussed.
Uh, the second.
And on which item?
That'll be 13A.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And on the other item, we are going to table for now and-
Sorry.
No.
Yeah, and we're going to, it's, A is proceed as discussed because we're going to, we need the paperwork to proceed forward next time. And so B will also be, make a motion to proceed as discussed.
Aren't we going to table one?
Yeah, we're-
We don't necessarily need to, that's all I'm saying. But we can if you want.
Yeah, I think we'll just table it and put it on the next, so that way we can be on the next.
Okay, then I'll amend my motion for 13A to table the mo, uh, table the item.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then on 13B, I'll make a motion to proceed as discussed.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we are adjourned. Thank you.